People in. Okay, I think we're good. Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is the September meeting of the Brighton Town zoning board of the. Just a couple of things to be aware of here. The, well, let's call the meeting order first. Go ahead, Rick. Please call the roll. Rick.
He's on mute.
Yep.
You're mute.
Primo.
Here.
Ms. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Thomas, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Dick, Mr. Dick, Diogastine?
Mr. D.
Mr. Mike?
Here.
This is McPain Brewing?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
That's correct. So all members are present.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, so let's just talk about the the agenda and how we do our me- well, let's one other thing. Let them keep going out of here. I apologize, Holly. Um, was the board meeting properly advertised, Mr. De Stefano?
Yes, it was advertised in the daily record of September first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, very good. Okay, so let's talk about the agenda. There are three items, uh, eighty oh four, five, and six, which are holdovers with open public hearings from last month. So due to the amount of discussion there will be with those, we're gonna start with nine eight oh one and go through nine oh six, and then we will go back to eighty oh four. This way people don't have to stay on as long to hear that discussion. Anybody who would like to, please feel free to stay on as long as you like. Okay, um, other than that, is there anything else you want to say before we get into the minutes, Rick?
Um, I have nothing. There are, there were some communications that came over, um, with the final agenda. I hope everybody got those and was able to take a look at that. I also received a communication late in the day today that does not appear on the agenda regarding thirty thirty-one oh eight East Avenue in support of the request of the applicant for that. Um, I have nothing else unless some of the members have any questions.
Okay, just for the people on the call, um, what we do is we will be reading them in the order that I suggested. When your case comes up, could you please identify yourself and then you will be uh, able to speak and your responsibility is to let us know why you feel that we should support your application. And the board members, if they have any questions, will ask you direct questions. As soon as that's finished, we will ask if there's anyone else on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding your application. They will do that, and then we will close the public hearing and move to the next case. Once we finish the six and then move through the three, and there's a couple of old business things, then we will maybe take a few minute break if necessary, or we will get right into the deliberations. Now, you're welcome to listen to the deliberations. We don't allow any discussion between the board and applicants or residents or anyone else, but you're free to listen. And we try unless there's a reason to table an application to finish them tonight. If you decide not to stay, then you could call Mr. De Stefano in the building office tomorrow and hear the result of any application. Okay, so we have minutes from the July meeting. Yes?
Yes, for the July, no for the August.
That's correct. Okay, so, uh, the July meeting, does anyone have any corrections, additions, deletions, et cetera?
Judy? You're on view, uh, you're on mute, Julie.
Okay, I'm done. Okay?
Yes.
All right, page thirty-nine, line twelve, the word is irrelevant. Page. Hold on here. Sixty-one. Um, line fifteen, the first word is will. Page. Sixty-six, um, condition number one, line twelve. Um, I believe the word is approval. The approval is granted is per the application. You wouldn't say the application is granted per the application.
Right.
It's approval. Okay, um, page seventy-one. Line twenty-five. Um, I think the word instead of applicant should be ample. Ample parking. Page seventy-two. Line one. The first word, I hope you people will take a look at it. It's one of the, um, findings of fact number three, and it reads landing of the two tents will not result in, I think, is it locating or something? Does that make more sense? Locating of the two tents will not result in a change of the character of the neighborhood. Is, okay, so word number one is locating. Page seventy-five. Um, line, oh, line two. Um, again, the approval. Approval. Page seventy-seven, again, line two, approval instead of applicant. Page. Hold on here. Eighty-five, um, line fifteen, the first word is neighborhood. Page eighty-nine. Uh, line twenty-one, insert the word do, do you eat after needed? Needed do. Page ninety-one, line eighteen. Oh, gosh, the word change should be chain, C-H-A-I-N. And lastly, page ninety-eight, line fifteen. The second word should be front. The front backs up, and that's what I have.
Okay, very good. Does anyone else have any other additions, corrections, deletions? Okay, so could we have a motion for the minutes as amended?
This is Kathleen.
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, and a second, please.
Second.
Okay, Ed, thank you.
The motion is to approve with correction, Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Thomas, right?
Yes.
Mr. Diogastine?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
This is McKay Brewing?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
I'm hoping to approve with cor- corrections carried.
Okay, very good. All right, so Rick, whenever you're ready.
Okay, again, as stated, applications eighty oh four, eighty oh five, and eighty oh six will be held for, um, until we go through the nine A application, so we'll start with nine eight oh one twenty-two, application of Oak Hill Terrace apartment. K of P LLC, owner property located at twenty-four seventy East Avenue for an area variance in section two oh seven dash two A to our front yard fence to be four feet in height, move the maximum three point five feet allowed by code. I'll start an application and plans on file.
Okay, who do we have speaking for nine eight one? Is there anyone here to speak for nine eight oh one? I don't know, Rick, that they guessed the time with the other things ahead of it, so.
Uh. This is Andrew Con Savage representing the Oak Hill Terrace.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, can you just give us your, uh, full name and address, please?
Um, yes, my address is two hundred, or excuse me, one fifty-five Gateway Landing Boulevard.
Okay, very good. And could you spell your last name, please?
I spell K O N S A V as in vector, A G E.
Okay, very good. Okay, so when you're ready, please proceed.
Um, yeah, so we're asking for the variance for the dog park, um, located at Oak Hill Terrace. Um, we put the dog park in. It was not, um, one of my projects. I inherited this. Um, it was brought to my attention that a permit was not pulled, um, for that project. Um, and so I went to obtain the permit and was instructed that we needed a variance due to the height of the fence. The dog park itself is an amenity to the residents of Oak Hill Terrace, um, to walk their dogs, um, as well as let them exercise. Also, um, it's not an eyesore from the street. It's not within any easement. And, um, the cost to shorten the fence by roughly, what is it, eight inches? Um, would be, I believe, an undue burden, um, considering the cost that we had already, um, expended to install it. Um, that's, that's all I have.
Just a couple of questions. Have you had any issues or comments from neighbors or anyone else related to the fence other than your own residents?
Um, I have not heard any com- comments, um, good or bad.
Right.
Um, from the neighborhood. Um, I have no complaints that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right, very good. Uh, board members, questions?
Sure, this is member right, just a question about typical heights. Are they, for a dog park, is it typical to have a four foot high fence?
That, that would be correct, ma'am. Um, it's just a standard chain link fence, um, one you would find at a dog park or, um, a residential backyard.
I, I think, Sarah, the question was, you know, from the manufacturer, the fence company, whatever, do they generally suggest a four foot fence for?
Um, I, I would say yes, it's a standard fence overall spec for dog parks.
Okay. Uh, board members, questions?
What approximately is the square footage of the fenced area?
It is approximately three hundred square feet. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, other questions?
Dennis, I just.
Oh, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I just, just for the record, I just wanted to add a comment that, um, in my work with the, um, animal control officers, we've had occasion to review fencing, uh, for dogs. Um, in fact, we currently have a pending matter where we had a dangerous dog, um, who had attacked a jogger along the street, and we had asked the resident to put it in a fence. Um, and this dog happens to be a very, very short-legged dog, and they're installing a three and a half foot fence. Bruce Blackman, who heads the animal control office, said if it wasn't for the fact that this was a very, very short dog, he would find that a three and a half foot fence would not be adequate to contain a dog.
Okay, that's good improvement. That's.
Any large, any larger dog, and you're gonna want a higher fence.
Okay, excellent. All right, I appreciate that, that, you know, he obviously works with us every day, and, you know, it's a important issue. All right, so go ahead, Andrea.
Rob, you and Andrew.
Sorry, this is just, I just want to affirm, the application response to, um, self-created says that, it mentions Collins Avenue. I just want to confirm that's.
I, I'm sorry, I believe it should have been Clover Street.
Right.
Collins.
Yeah, no Collins. Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Any other board member issues? Questions? Okay, very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding the dog park and the fence height? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application nine eight oh two twenty-two, application Jeff Zimmer, Beer Creek Landscape, Bear Creek Landscapes contractor, and Matthew and Minnie De Rosa, owners of property located at one forty-eight Dale Road for an area variance in section two oh seven dash two A, allow front yard fence to be four feet wide, move the maximum three point five feet allowed by code. I'll start an application and plan is on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for nine eight oh two?
Hi, my name is Matt DeRosa. I live at one forty-eight Dale Road with my wife and family.
Okay, very good, sir. Please proceed.
Um, so, uh, we live on a corner lot, and our, our variance is, uh, at a forty-eight inch fence, um, which, because we're at a corner lot, we technically have two front yards. Um, so the one side, uh, that faces Dale Road East, uh, will have a forty-eight inch fence, and similarly, uh, our intention for the forty-eight fence, inch fences for our, our dog and the kids. So, you know, similar to the last request, the, the purpose is to, you know, better have our dog in the backyard.
Okay.
So, so I hope the request seems reasonable to the group here.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, board members, questions for Mr. De Rosa?
Yeah, Mr. De Rosa, this is, uh, member Primo. Um, the fence is going to be tied in with the existing fence that's out there. There's one that runs along part of the, the backyard, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, yeah.
And, um, have you talked to your neighbor about tying in the fence there?
Uh, I, I mentioned it to him in conversation, and he didn't have an issue with it, but he only asked that I put a gate there or something so that he can get to his hedges if he needed to, so. Um, that, that was the extent of our conversation, though.
Yes, and a, along Dale Road East, um, there's a, there's a stone driveway that's the one you use to take your cars in and out, is that right?
Yep.
And are you going to be putting a gate in there too, also?
Yes.
Okay. Um. I don't have any other further, further questions. Thank you.
Okay, other board, other board members, please?
Member Schwartz, I just want to ask you on Dale East, how far up is it going to go beyond your little addition there and right up to the house itself? Or like to the carport or what? I was trying to figure that out for sure.
Um, so it'll go down the hill a bit from our house, so, um, you know, between the carport and the the road, it will go down about fifteen feet, and then there's probably another twelve or fifteen feet to the road beyond that that's not shown on the property survey. So we, we can.
Just to clarify.
Go ahead.
Sorry, just to clarify that, the fence will be approximately fifteen feet from, not necessarily the legal right of way, but where the road actually meets the grass?
I, I would say it's about fifteen feet from, from where the road is to where the fence will be proposed. So.
Okay, very good. Board members, any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a question, I guess, for, uh, maybe it's for Rick. Uh, any requirement of ARB approval or a building permit?
Building permits, yes, ARB, no.
Thank you.
Matt, can you just say for the record the type of fencing that you're going to have along?
Yes, it, there'll, there'll be a forty-eight inch aluminum, aluminum fence, um, so it'll be, uh, part, like, partial screen, you can see through it, it's, you know, pretty standard aluminum fencing.
Um, Mr. De Rosa, I assume it's a chain link fence?
No, it won't be chain link. It'll be, um, uh, I wish I included a picture of it, but it'll, it'll be, uh, I, I don't know how you describe it, um, you know, but it's an aluminum fence that, uh, um. Yeah, it, I, I don't know if anyone else is familiar with aluminum fencing, but, um, it's, it's not chain link. Uh, they, they have posts, and they're probably like four inches apart or something.
But are they, sir, can you see through it or not?
You, you can see through it, yes.
So, so it's similar to the aluminum fences that go around pools that have, usually you see them, they're black aluminum fences that go around pools with a, with like a picket fence, basically, but a very, um, thinner, smaller post, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I think I always refer to it as wrought iron, even though it's not wrought iron. It kind of has that look to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably most similar to wrought iron.
Okay. Very good. Okay, other questions? Okay, very good. All right. Ed, at this point, then, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding the application at one forty-eight Dale Road? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application nine eight oh three twenty-two, application of Pat- Patrick Langworthy, owner of property located at one fifty-nine David Avenue for an area variance with section two oh five dash two, allow front porch to extend five point seven five into the forty foot front setback required by code. I'll start an application and plan is on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this?
Patrick Langworthy.
Okay, hello, Patrick. So what's your address, Patrick?
It's one five nine David Ave.
Okay, when you're ready, go for it.
So I had, um, wanted to put on a front porch, and I had the architect draw two different, uh, proposals, and one of them was within the codes or setback or whatever you want to call it, and one of them was just outside of, it would, uh, bump up out into the setback, and I went in front of ARB, and I told them, this one fits, this one doesn't. I let them pick, and they picked the one that I needed a variance for.
Oh.
That was the one they liked better, so I just let them pick, and here we are.
Yeah, just for a little clarification, if I can, um, basically, the code allows the front porch to extend up to six feet into the front setback when the house informs to the front setback. Um, if it's no larger than six by eight. Uh, so I think the first, uh, iteration that Patrick showed met that code, would not require a variance. Um, by making it actually wider, uh, that forces them into a variance, because I think it's now six, well, five, and it's just basically six feet by, what's the length on it, Patrick, the new, uh?
It's either, it's either ten or twelve.
So by doing that, that pushes them into the variant, because of the length of it, not because of the depth of it.
Right.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I had two drawings done, because I know the ARB is particular, except I've dealt with them before, and I just told them, you guys pick, I don't care, I'll put whatever up, one you want up.
Okay.
Jason, can you go down and, and, uh, just show the two different iterations?
I don't know that we have both of them here, Rick.
Okay, I think this is relevant anyway, so. Okay, but then you got the dimensions here on this one. It is twelve feet, twelve point eight feet, tie twelve and eight. Right.
Yeah, so I think on the drawing, on the screen, it shows where the eight foot one would be, and then where the twelve foot one would be.
Yeah, I guess you can see it.
Yeah, you can see the, kind of the pattern line showing.
Yes. Okay, but we're looking at the twelve foot, so that's the relevance. Um, it, Patrick, this is, this porch intended to stay open?
Um, yeah, there's gonna be two columns in the front that you can see there, and then the sides and the front will be open, unless I need to put railings in or something like that on the sides.
Right, but you have no reason to think about enclosing it in any fashion, other than.
No, 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 I just.
Just a safety reason if you need a rail or something, okay. All right.
Yeah, no, this was just intended so I have a roof when I'm walking in and it's raining, and that's the whole purpose.
Okay, good. Okay, board members, questions?
This is board member Schmidt. Um, I was a little confused. Is there currently a porch now, or are you creating a new porch?
No, there is, there's a, a landing right now. So the landing is concrete, and it's breaking apart, so I figured it had to be redone anyway, so while I'm doing that, might as well just add a roof onto it.
Thank you, that makes sense. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, anyone else? Questions?
This is my right member, Mr. Primo.
Hold on, okay, Andrea?
I, just to confirm, there are several other homes in, in this generally or on this road in this neighborhood that, or on this road that do have front porches, and some of which are wider than what would be permitted by code, I guess, based on the setback requirement?
Yeah, there's all sorts of variations around here.
Thank you.
Uh, Heather, did you have a question?
Yeah, between the, uh, two plans that you mentioned, is this the one that affords seating and the other one did not?
I believe the bigger one does, yes.
And so that's what the ARB was in favor of as well?
I, I don't know if that was the specific reason, or if it was one of the reasons. Like I said, I just had the drawings put in front of them and told them they can pick.
Yeah.
Heather, I think it was more of a scale issue.
Yeah, well, when you look at the gable there, it'd probably be pretty, pretty narrow looking if it was at eight feet versus twelve, so that might be part of it.
Yeah, it was all based on the aesthetics that ARB chose this one.
Okay, other questions, board members?
Dennis?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just for clarification purposes, on the application that I have in front of me, I think it requests a five foot variance, but in the summary on the agenda, it talks about a five point seven five foot variance. I don't know if this is Rick or, um, the applicant. Can you clarify exactly what is being sought?
Um, like Rick said, I'm going wider and not out into the setback, so it must just be for that extra five and three quarters feet wide. If you're allowed eight.
Depth, it would really be depth.
That is correct, and since the house is a little bit, uh, Jason, can you go up to the site plan? And since the house is like forty-two and three eighths.
Oh, okay.
Back a little bit, so the actual variance is gonna be not quite, you, you can see the depth of it being five feet eleven, but subtracted two inches, and it comes out to be about five point seven five feet and.
Okay. There is the answer.
So, um, just so I'm clear, then, Rick, um, are you the one who calculated it to be five point seven five feet?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Langworthy, um, you're amending your application to ask for that five point seven five feet, correct?
Yes, if I had written down five, that was incorrect.
Okay, very good. Thank you for clarifying. Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Patrick. Um, is there anyone in the Zoom call or on the Zoom call that wants to speak regarding, uh, one fifty-nine David Ave? Okay, there being none, public hearing is closed.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Application nine eight oh four twenty-two, application of Sarah Colvin Van Huzen, owner of property located at fifty-four Brook Lawn Drive for an area variance, section two oh five dash two, to our rear addition, to extend one point two five feet into the thirty-five point five foot rear setback or three foot rear setback, as by code, also start an application and plan is on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for fifty-four Brook Lawn?
Eric Colvin.
Sarah, your address, please?
Fifty-four Brook Lawn.
Perfect. Okay, please proceed.
We're looking to create a three-season, essentially, room off a pre-existing patio, and the current situation is the back of our property line is not straight. So we're looking for a foot and a quarter based on Jeff's measurements around to have the back of the house flat, so it's a complete essential square, if you would, um, to that three-season room.
Okay. All right. So board members, questions for Sarah? Any questions?
Yeah, I think Dennis, this is just one of those, um, you know, catch twenty-two, the property's not exactly straight. It got a pre-existing non-conforming setback now, so even if you extend a tiny bit into that pre-existing non-comformant, you need a variance.
Right.
Um, and then, you know, having to put that wall at an angle just doesn't make a lot of sense.
Right, right. Sarah, would, would you say that this is the minimum that you need in order to make this work for you?
Yes, um, the, I mean, they're gonna actually blow out, but in order to put the, the poster and to have it aligned with the back of the house, the contractor said it's, you know, pretty straightforward from there, as long as we get the approval.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions, board members? Okay, thank you very much. Uh. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding fifty? Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding fifty-four Brook Lawn? Okay, since there's none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application nine eight oh five twenty-two, application Todd Ennis and Amanda McIntosh, owners of property located at one thirty-three Summit Drive. For extension, I'm gonna approve variance, pursuant to section two nineteen dash five F, allowing for a reduced front setback in the in greater lot coverage, all of the application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
Hi, this is Todd Ennis. Uh one three three Summit Drive, how you guys doing tonight?
Okay, great, Todd, go right ahead.
Um it's just a tale of whoa, it's been tough for me to get the project started. Um my contractor got sick uh last year, about a couple months before we were supposed to start and he retired, left me high and dry. And I wasn't able to get the project uh moving appreciably, so I'm asking for yet again another year of uh e- extension on this uh for the variance.
Okay. Do you have some plan about what the timing to the best of your knowledge is, starting September seventh?
Yeah, um after interviewing five or six other contractors, I've I've landed on my plazio and uh we have a time of, is it April, uh breaking ground in the first stage. Um so late spring, early summer would be the break ground date once again.
And you would expect to finish when?
Uh Octo- uh September, uh possibly October at the latest.
Okay, so about a year from now, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, board members, questions, please?
This is member Wright, no changes to the application, however, with the exception of timing, it's the exact same extent expansion that was previously planned and approved?
That that is correct, no changes, just a time extension.
Very good. Board members, other questions? Okay, Todd, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application nine eight oh six twenty-two, application of Robert Piazza Polato, owner of property located at twenty-five hundred Elmwood Avenue for an area variance in section two oh five dash two. Allow garage addition to extend three feet into the existing eight point two foot side setback where a ten point eight foot side setback is required by code. All the driving application and plans on file.
Okay, very good, and who is speaking for uh twenty-five hundred Elmwood? Is there anyone here to speak for?
Robert is here, I see him on call.
Oh, is he muted? I don't
He just uh chatted.
Okay, I'm here, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that, for some reason, one of them let me unmute myself.
Okay, and could you just, Robert, give us your address, please?
Yeah, twenty-five hundred Elmwood Avenue.
Okay, great, please proceed.
Okay, um yeah, I actually bought the house about a year ago and I've been remodeling that and uh come to find out the existing garage itself, it's a walkout in the back. And um so there's a lower level below the garage and the whole garage floor is crumbling in, it's extremely unsafe. I've had several contractors look at it because I tried to save the structure, but it's telling me that there's no saving it. I've had a few engineers look at it too and they're all making the recommendations to uh to remove the the garage and rebuild it from scratch just because the foundation and not only is the uh floor coming in, but the foundation has been uh severely damaged or structurally damaged with vertical cracks going through the whole entire block. So, you know, given the uh the magnitude of what I've already done to the property as far as fixing it up, the garage is very dysfunctional in the essence that it's only eleven and a half feet wide, you really can't even put a car in there. Um not that it's not just safe, but I mean, eh these cars are bigger today and, you know, being on a main road too, um it's hard to um you know, uh you know, turn around in the driveway and uh come out the the other way too, so um i- it's just more of a hardship for me. And uh I have my girlfriend moving in with her two kids that are fifteen and fourteen and uh my daughter is uh coming back and moving in with me too as well, so we're kind of a blended family and uh you know, not only is the garage important to us, but uh being able to have and utilize the garage to at least have uh some space in there and storage because the the house isn't that big to begin with as well. Um you know, we're asking for a uh a three foot extension, making the garage eleven six to you know, fourteen foot, six inches, eight inches wide. Um and what it does is it puts us a minimum of five feet from the side setback. And uh this way, um we can have something a reasonable car will can go in and open up the doors and have a little bit of storage too as well. Um realistically, we're in bounds as far as from front setbacks and side and uh rear setbacks, it's just mainly you know, going to the side right there. Um I did have a chance to look at a lot of properties, even on Elmwood. Um even like three houses down from me, there's houses uh that are encroaching within five feet. Um there's porches that are encroaching the side within five feet too as well, there's quite a bit of houses on Wenton Road two uh that are within um the side setbacks. Um so i- it's not like it's um by going a little bit wired wider, it's not uh that's what I'm looking for, it's not out of the realm of the neighborhood. And plus, it would be benefiting uh the values of the property too by having a usable garage. Um if you want to, a comparison. And if we looked at um twenty-five thirty and twenty-five thirty-two, um twenty-five or twenty-five thirty as an enclosed portion, that's probably within two or three feet of the property line, and that's only three houses down from me. And then the one right to the right of that one or the east actually be the west of that one, um twenty-five thirty-two has a porch, it's probably about three feet within. So, you know, I wanted to stay within five feet just so that um I I don't need much more than that, but having a fourteen and a half foot wide garage would make it usable. Um I'd be able to put a car in there and still have an opportunity to have a turnaround and then uh coming out into Elmwood, that would help out significantly too as well.
Okay, very good. Alright, questions for Mr. Polato?
Um member D Augustine here, um can you describe sort of the uh layout, how it's um uh the garage is on ground level uh in the front, uh but then in the back, what happens to the terrain and what's underneath the garage?
It's a open space, it's a full foundation underneath it. And it does come out to a walkout, I mean, you can see it right there.
Yeah.
The whole backyard's a full walkout, I mean, literally come out to ground level, so it significantly drops. And you can see the the step cracking and the vertical cracks throughout the foundation. And it's hard to, I mean, if you look up a little bit on the the last picture right there, you can see how the ceiling is all spunk and all the metal framing is all rotted.
Right. Okay, and, oh no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's that's really about it, yeah, so it's I couldn't save it, that's the problem.
And would you say the uh variance you're looking for is the minimum amount of space you would need to make it usable for uh the vehicles that you have?
Yes.
Okay, have you uh have you spoken to your neighbor about uh what you're doing?
Yeah, I did, and I actually went to her and I, you know, I'm all about trying to be neighborly about it. So listen, you know, this is what's going on, I asked her if she could write me a letter and she did actually write a letter. Um and she uh uh with this and uh, you know, I think her biggest concern is that when you look at her house and I can share my, if you want me to share my screen, she's got a side porch on the side of the garage.
Right.
Yeah, and when you look at the side porch, it faces my garage already. So it's not going to hinder her any appearance on the garage, we're just going three foot wider in. Still gonna have the same look when she looks out her porch and or on the side of her porch. It's just that we're coming a little bit closer in, even though I'm gonna be five feet away from the property line. Her porch is twelve and a half feet away from the property line, so we're still gonna be a good eighteen, seventeen and a half feet away from her side porch. And you know, uh she and I said, you know, listen, I I wanna be neighborly and I wanna make sure you're happy with this, that's why I brought it to her attention prior to. And uh she goes, you know, if you could put some bushes there or something like that, I'd be very, very happy. And I said, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so you'd be amenable to putting some landscaping along the side there?
Yeah, that's that's minor and I'll do whatever she wants me to do with that.
Okay, alright, that's fair, thank you.
Okay, other questions by the board?
Yeah, just for clarification, um Robert, is there an overhang on that side? Is that five feet taken from the foundation or that five feet taken from an overhang?
Uh from the foundation, the current home doesn't have any side overhangs, they're flat, so I wanted to keep it consistent. With the uh with the structures or the other side of the structures.
Great, thank you.
Questions by the board?
Just, I did I, um applicant, they that the neighbor did send a letter and support?
Yes.
Was that part of our packet and I just, it was?
Yep, it's in there.
Uh might have come in and yes.
It was in the last email.
Okay.
Email.
With the agenda.
I guess for curiosity, Robert, are you filling in the lower level or are you gonna keep the lower level open? Uh with with an elevated garage floor?
Um I'm gonna keep it open with the elevator because the house, I mean, it it walks out to a full basement, it'd be if I could utilize the lower level of storage, that would be helpful.
Makes sense, yep. Okay, other questions by the board? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, since there are none, then the public hearing is closed.
Okay, I will read the next three applications and I will handle them as one. Application eight eight oh four twenty-two, application of Pem LLC, contract Mandy and Bristol Valley Homes LLC, owner of property located at thirty-one oh eight East Avenue for a use variance in section two oh three dash forty-four. Allow a gas station with convenience store to be located in a BE one office and office park district or not allowed by code. All the driving application and plans on file. Application eight eight oh five twenty-two, same contract Mandy, same owner of property located at thirty-one oh eight East Avenue. For area variance in section two oh seven dash six B to allow accessory structure, gas canopy to be located in the front yard and move the rear yard as required by code, also driving application and plans on file. And the application eight eight oh six twenty-two, same contract Mandy, same owner locate for property located at thirty-one oh eight East Avenue for area variance system, section two oh five dash eighteen to one, allow parking of vehicles to within two feet of a side lot line where a ten foot setback is required by code. And two, allow paved areas slash aisles up to the front lot line where a twenty foot setback is required by code. Also driving application and plans on file.
Okay, so let let me just, before we start, just give people a little background, if you're on the call and interested in these applications, so last month, we did uh have a public hearing which we have open on all three of these cases and people spoke that wished to. And but yet the applicant did not do a real formal presentation because they were not able to that evening for various reasons. So what we will start with tonight is the presentation by the applicant of these applications. And then we will leave the public hearing open and if anyone wishes to speak, just like we did with the last six, it will be the same, okay?
Mister Chairman, I just want to note that I'm recusing myself from these applications.
Okay. Alright, so who do we have speaking for these applications, please? Do we have anyone identified to speak? I thought I saw Betsy's name up here earlier, but
Yep, I just am being let in here, so.
Okay.
Give me a second here, it's not letting me un- turn on my video.
Okay, take your time, go ahead.
Uh it says, the host has disabled me.
Oh.
So you can hear me, but I don't think you can see me.
No.
Yeah.
If you want me to start, I'll go ahead and start while they figure.
Yeah, he they could, yeah, Daisy could see what he could do about the video.
Okay.
On your end, please.
Yeah, I think it's on your end, so.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Betsy Brug, I'm with Woods Oviat Gilman, um yes, we are here tonight, I appreciate your starting with that introduction, uh Mister Chairman. Um we had started preparing, uh you know, a response and realized that, of course, we did not have the opportunity to give a presentation because we uh had some health issues and weren't ready to move forward last week, but we did take in a lot of comments and feedback from the public. Um I just wanna be upfront because I know there's a lot of public interest in this application that we do intend to engage with the neighborhood as soon as we have some additional information to share. And as soon as we can figure out where we can meet um with COVID and all, it's been difficult to find a location, let's see, I think I'm being allowed in now. There we go, okay.
Alright, very good.
So, uh anyway, so yes, so our hope is that we can present this application to you. Um we're going with the original application because we didn't want to submit any last minute uh material that the board would not have opportunity to review. Um but we've got most of the team on, uh Lou Tarragnoli from Pem, who um is uh proposing the uh Quiklys operation here is on the call. Frank Romeo from Bristol Valley, who is the uh property owner, is on the call. John Sharaba, our project engineer, is on the call, and Amy Day from SRF, uh our transportation engineer is also uh available tonight, so. Um with that, we have a lot of material to cover, so I will uh start with a presentation of the application. And I appreciate that you have the original site plan up here. Um so let's see here, so the plan that you have here, you see East Avenue on the, now look at my copy here, it's a little easier, on the west. So um this property has been, was built as a gas station, um has been a gas station. I, my understanding is since nineteen twenty-nine and that it closed in two thousand seventeen, sometime around late two thousand seventeen. The current property owner acquired it um in two thousand eighteen, not long after it closed. Um and it's been vacant, he has had it marketed, we are here requesting a use variance, I'll get into the use variance uh shortly. So, um let's talk about the parcel size, so we're so, we're in the BE one zoning district, which is the town's office, office park district. But obviously, we are not in a neighborhood that has any other offices or office parks, uh we are um a point three five eight acre parcel. So the code requires forty thousand square feet, so this is a legally pre-existing non-conforming parcel. It is only fifteen thousand six hundred and fourteen square feet, which is less than half of the required parcel size under the code today. There is an existing Tudor building there, that building is a historic landmark that is um designated and protected by the town. The building is vacant, it has been vacant. Um the lot coverage is currently seventy-four point five percent. Again, that is a legally pre-existing non-conforming condition, under today's code, the maximum lot coverage is sixty-five percent. Uh the rear setback of the existing building is also non-conforming. Again, it is legally existing at seventeen point five feet, where code currently requires thirty. Um there is currently no green space along the frontage. And the building itself is exactly what it is, an old gas station. The restrooms are on the outside, it is, you know, it's an old building, it's not built to current kind of design standards. And it is a total of one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet in size, which is relatively small. Um smaller than typical houses in the area and certainly just very limiting in size, particularly since it is a regulated building, it's a landmark. It's not easy to um add or modify the building and certainly it is restricted from demolition. The context, where are we located? So we are at the intersection of East The context, where are we located? So we are at the intersection of East Avenue and cannot see Linden on here, but we are very close to Linden. Um to the north of the site is the firehouse. Um there used to be a smaller, I think also Tudor and Rick. You know, you may have a better memory of it, but I think it was an old Tudor firehouse at one point, and I'm not sure. You know, what year it was demolished and rebuilt, but there is now a very large contemporary, modern firehouse there. Um so that is probably what I would describe as the more dominant, probably the most dominant feature of kind of this immediate area. Um across the street, on the opposite side of East Avenue, on the north, we have the golf course. On the south, we have a a house, uh it until recently, until the last few years. I believe was the office of a dentist, I think it was Dr. Cagno's office. My understanding, since I saw correspondence from the current owner of that house, is that it is now a residence, but I'm not a hundred percent sure what's going on over there. Um it does still have a very large commercial parking lot um on the East Avenue side, so. I think it's a house, uh but I'm not exactly sure what what the use is. Um there's other, obviously, obviously, a lot of residential nearby, there's residential on the other side on Linden. The Friendly Home is to the east and the south. There is a house directly behind the site, that house is actually owned by the Friendly Home. Um I believe it is, my understanding is it is often used by the fire department that they use it. Um there is another house just to the south, I think it's been vacant for some time. Um but there is a house there. And then a little further to the south, we have more residential and we have essentially reached the um the elementary school. So that is the context, um as far as the traffic, obviously, East Avenue and Linden are both uh streets with, you know, multiple lanes of traffic. Uh the exit uh and on ramp on uh four ninety on Linden is a pretty busy place, it's right around the corner from the site. So what is the proposal here? So we basically have an existing vacant site, it's very small, it is zoned for office use. The current owner has had it uh marketed for office uses. He has had a lot of interest in the property, but you know, nothing has really come of it. The most viable option, uh the only one that has really gone under contract is the current um current use, current user that we're proposing. Uh which is for Quiklys, which would essentially be to reestablish the gas station use of the property. Um I will say this is a very unusual gas station proposal. Uh because the proposal is to reuse the existing building, which is again. Just over a what's not less than twelve hundreds, I'm sorry. Eleven, I just want to make sure I get the square footage right, yeah, less than twelve hundred square feet in size. Uh so the proposal is to use that building, not to make any additions to that building, but just to restore and improve the condition of that building. And operate a very, very small convenience store. Um just for perspective, I think a typical convenience store uh is in the four to five thousand square foot range. Um if you were to look at other types of um convenience stores, so this is a very, very small convenience store. That would be housed in the existing building. Um the site would be cleaned up. Two pumps would be added, um there were two pumps here previously, I believe the applicant's uh original. Uh project had a third pump, but they have removed that at the request of the Historic Preservation Commission. So we're down to two pumps with a modest sized canopy. Um the canopy has generated a fair amount of interest from the public. Um we're going to have some additional information to share on that, we're getting photometrics prepared and some additional information on that. But I do want to point out that the Historic Preservation Commission has seen this project, I believe on four different occasions, they hammered on it. Um and I believe that they are ready to approve this based on the design, so. We're restoring a historic building and the canopy is going to be designed to also conform to that historic character. It is going to be very small scale canopy um with an appropriate design. Um it is not going to light up the skies like people are used to seeing at other types of um, you know, larger gas stations. But again, we'll get you some visuals and material to review on that later. Um we are cleaning up the site. Um there is uh existing pavement kind of everywhere here, so we're actually going to add some green space where there currently isn't any. We are going to bring the lot coverage into conformity. Uh there's nothing we can do about the rear setback, we're going to work with the existing. Um you know, uh conditions there, we can't move the building, obviously. Uh there are um area variances required to allow a canopy. Um for the location of the parking, which is uh I guess on the north side. So we are closer than what code would allow um next to the firehouse, so it's an existing condition, but it's next to the firehouse. I just want to make sure that that's pointed out. Um the pavement um in the front, that is actually going to be an improvement from existing conditions. And did I miss one? I think that I think that covers those, the area variances. So that is what's proposed, essentially a small scale convenience store and gas station. Um the use, because we are in the um BE one zoning district, we do require a use variance. It would not have been required had the um operation not closed and essentially lost uh lost its grandfathering. It's just what happened. Um but we do need a use variance, we have submitted a fair amount of information on. The um use variance case, I'm going to go through that, would you like me to go through that first? Go through the experience first and then touch on the area variances?
That's fine.
Okay, great, so um the property owner's on, uh so essentially since two thousand eighteen, when when um. Bristol Valley Homes acquired the property, they have been marketing it. Frank Romeo was on, he has over forty years of experience in the commercial real estate business, he has developed a lot of property in. Rochester area. Um there's been a lot of interest, I think I submitted a list. Uh of, you know, that he provided with all of the various uh inquiries that he's received. Um on the property. And let's see, what's in here, um he's also provided the letter kind of explaining his market. So hopefully you have a chance to to look at that, but he has had it marketed. Um essentially, the property is not marketable for what the uses are that are permitted by the code. The code essentially allows office uses, that's what's allowed here are office parks, obviously, the property is not big enough for an office park. Um some of the conditional uses, I'll just point them out because this is part of the board's responsibility to review. Um most of the special permit uses, again, are not, um they require a larger parcels. Or they there just isn't much of a market for those types of uses. Um as far as the office use itself, that's really what we're looking at, can this property generate a reasonable return? For the uses that are allowed by code, is there someone who would invest in this property and turn it into an office? Um where there wouldn't be um. Where it just wouldn't be a money loser, and I think that we can demonstrate that it's just not economically viable. To use this property as an office. So um we've given you sort of some examples, so uh the current owner paid a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on the property. Um we've given you an income and expense statement, so we've demonstrated it's vac- vacant, so he's paying, you know, taxes, insurance, maintenance. So he is losing money on the property, so with that investment. Um he would need to um make significant improvements to convert this to an office use. We do have a construction estimate. Um I will note that there is uh a letter that was submitted questioning whether that uh construction estimate. Was in fact from a third-party contractor, and it was, uh we will be addressing that separately in writing. Uh but yes, the construction estimate that we provided is very legit. Um so the amount of investment required, let's see, I just want to make sure I get the numbers right here. So the work required is about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we've given you an outline and a description of the work that's required and an estimate. So in theory, if somebody were to pay even, well, the property, let's just say the property is on. Let's see, I believe the property is on the rolls at, I'm just looking what your assessed value is. The assessed value is three thirty-six, excuse me, I'm getting this wrong, um. Three, should bear with me here. Okay, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought here, so. The uh. The amount paid was one hundred and seventy-five, I gave you an example of half of the assessed. So assuming that he overpaid for the property and I went with a hundred and sixteen thousand, which is half of the assessed value. So that would make the property uh to, I think, supposed to be assessed at two thirty-two. So even if somebody were to pay, ha- you know, half of the assessed value, which is significantly less than the current property owner did buy. If they put in the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of improvements that are required. The total investment required to be three thirty-six or two hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot for this building. And we went to um several commercial brokers, uh Mark Palazzo has given you a letter of opinion. He's given you some some comps for um office property in the town. And I believe he has given you the market rate is between a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and seventy dollars a square foot. Somebody wanted to buy office property in the town of Brighton. And that is significantly less than the required investment. We also gave you a comparison based on rental. And uh an investor would need to get twenty-five dollars a square foot to rent the property, which is significantly more than the market. Uh for rental property, rental office property in Brighton, which is in the twelve to eighteen dollars a square foot range. In Mister Romeo's case, he's paid a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, his actual hardship is actually higher. Um he would need to give forty dollars a foot to break even. Um I do want to point out, and I think the town staff may remember this, but he has come to the town. In the last couple of years with a couple of prospective interested parties. Um essentially, everybody that's looked at the property has needed uh I mean, a use variance uh and relief from the town. But he came in with uh ABVI Goodwill was looking at the property for potential drop-off site. Um but after they um, you know, heard the concerns from the town, they actually were scared off and did not want to pursue a youth variance. And we'll go through that process. Um there was also an office user that was interested. They did present a plan to the Historic Preservation Commission because they would have had to um put an addition on the building. And they wanted to put an addition, um you know, you, there's not much space in the back of the building, so they were going to go north with the addition. And they were discouraged by the Historic Preservation Commission that was not interested in having an addition put on the building. And though both of those uh parties, they never entered into contracts, but they did. Um have an interest in the property, explored it and walked away when they um, you know, were discouraged and turned away. Let's see, okay, so um I'd be happy to talk more about the financial hardship um aspects of the property. You know, our broker opinion, and I I think this is actually almost common sense, speaks to the challenges with marketing. A property this small for an office use. Um with the character of the neighborhood, it's not in an area with other offices. It's just small, the limitations of the historic building and what kind, how big an office somebody could have on this property. The physical limitations of the property, the location. You know, the historic restrictions on the building, the size of the building, the size of the property, the neighboring uses. I personally, myself, wonder why anybody would ever want to put an office next to a firehouse, I can't imagine that that is great conditions. Um to have an office, um but those are all factors that um just make this. Not particularly marketable for uh you know, an office type use. And I would say most of the users that have been interested have been interested either for gas station, convenience stores. Um service stations and uses that are not uh permitted by uh by the code. So let's talk about the other uh factors that the board needs to consider. Um the uniqueness of the hardship, this is the only property like this that you're going to find, this is not a um. A problem that you'll find throughout the entire zoning district or the neighborhood. It is unique in in respect to the small size of the property and the unique. Um conditions of the property that it is a historic building, it is a very small building. It is a very small parcel and it is not in an office neighborhood, so there are many challenges that are unique to this particular property. It can't just be demolished and you know, something bigger and more modern built here. Um so there are a lot of challenges specific to the property being isolated and it's uh, you know, it's physical condition and location. Um whether the variance um will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, if anything, we're going to clean up what is currently um. Kind of an outdated, obsolete piece of property, we're going to add green space where there never was any. The use is going to be restored to what historically has been the use of the property. The size and scale of what is being proposed for a gas station is consistent with. The history of this property and it is consistent with the character of the neighborhood because this is what it always has been. Uh it's going to maintain and restore an existing historic building, which again is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And I know there's concern about adding a canopy, but the canopy has been uh designed, we are. Going to provide the smallest possible canopy and it is consistent in design with the historic character of the building. Um whether the hardship is self-created and uh it is not self-created, it's created by the. Um kind of minimal uh market for this type of office use, um I think that's probably been hurt significantly by COVID. And more people working from home and needing less. Um you know, less of this type of, you know, small neighborhood office space, but essentially it's small, it's limited in size. It's in an isolated location, it's a landmark, all of those factors really are what uh generate the hardship for the property. Um let's see, the. Area variances, do you want me to get into the area variances? Do you have any questions? Do you want to talk more about the financial hardship? How would you like me to proceed?
Um why don't you?
I can't see you, so I'm sort of talking to myself.
Okay, Betsy, I think maybe you should just proceed and then I think board members then could ask questions instead of breaking up your presentation here.
Okay, great, so our area variances um have an area variance to allow a canopy in the front yard. Um because we need it for that structure. Um it's the only place it can go, if you look at the plan, you can see that the rear yard is non-conforming. Uh so it would be impossible to put anything back there. Um we need an area variance for the parking along the side lot line on the north. There's existing pavement there, and this is not a new uh condition, it's existing. Uh it'll be striped and cleaned up from, you know, what it currently is, but it is opposite or adjacent to, I should say, the firehouse. Uh which also has a very large, obviously, a large paved area in the front with all of their overhead doors. The pavement area um. And the aisles in the front yard, obviously, we need the pavement uh in the front yard, it's already there, if anything, we're actually improving the condition of the pavement. As you can see, we're delineating the driveways, you know, it's so that it's going to be, you know, a much cleaner um design in the front. Currently, it's just all paved out there, there's nothing green, we're going to add some landscaping, I believe we're going to add some stormwater management where they, I don't believe there is any. Um so there's a lot of physical improvements that come uh and improvements to the pavement. And with that comes the improvement of the lot coverage. We are at seventy-four, what'd I say, seventy-four and a half percent? We're over code and I believe we're going to bring it into compliance. So those are the area variances, so I, we've addressed the criteria in writing, but I'm going to kind of go through them. The um I think overall, we're going to be making significant improvements, this is going to be a much more attractive looking property. Um with this improvement, we're going to be restoring and maintaining the existing building. So there are a lot of pluses and benefits, not just for the applicant, um for for the neighborhood. This project can't happen without these variances, we can't put a gas station in there um without uh the variances. That is what historically has been in here, I know I've said that a few times. Um the character of the neighborhood is not going to be impacted, again. We are, we're going to have new drawings for you for the canopy, I I will say that we actually have been tightening up the canopy. Um to make some additional improvements to it, I think that um. You know, we'll be getting that to you in the next few weeks with our complete response. Um we're going to decrease the height a little bit and we're also going to decrease the size, again, the Historic Preservation Commission has seen the design, um and they're comfortable with it. Um the, let's see. The lock coverage, as I said, is going to be decreased, we're actually going to be less than the maximum, I think code allows sixty-five percent, we're going down to sixty-three point three percent. So even though we need variances related to the pavement in the front, um we are significantly improving the lock coverage. There's no alternative to the variances, we need the canopy to operate a gas station and we need the variances to use the space. This is a very small parcel, it is less than half the size the code would require. And there is nothing that we can do about that, so we have to work with the existing conditions and make the improvements. Um as best we can, the maximum improvements we can to make this the best possible site plan, so that is our focus. Um the. Whether the variances are substantial, um the variances are not substantial in amount, nature or impact. The, whether the variance is substantial, the variances are not substantial in amount, nature or impact, given the existing conditions, the non-conforming lot size, the non-conforming conditions, the existing historic landmark status, the fact that we have to use the existing building in its current footprint, the location and history of the use of the property as a gas station and the neighboring uses. So we are proposing two gas pumps, which is consistent with what has been here for many, many years. The, let's see. The parking, as you can see, we've kind of delineated the parking. So most of the parking is up here on the north, as you can see, closest to the firehouse. We have a few other parking spaces, but they are conforming. So all in all, I think our variances are minimized and will all be significant improvements to the existing conditions. Whether the variances will have any adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. If anything, we're going to improve the conditions of the neighborhood by restoring and making use of an old landmark building. We're going to renovate it, put it to a neighborhood friendly use. It's a use consistent with the past use of the property. It will have a convenience store, which I understand is a change. However, it is a very small convenience store. So a place for, you know, the neighborhood to walk and buy, you know, a bottle of milk, a loaf of bread, some snacks, that type of thing. It's going to be very small. It's much smaller than a typical convenience store. The, as I mentioned, the Historic Preservation Commission has seen the architecture. You know, over the course of several meetings, they kind of hammered on the design to arrive at, you know, unapprovable design for the architecture of the building and for the canopy. So we're pleased with that. Let's see, any other improvements? So in respect to the pavement setbacks, we are working with what we have, but we're improving the existing conditions. As I mentioned, there is a, some of the physical or environmental improvements are the addition of green space where there hasn't been any green space, really cleaning up the frontage of the site along the street, delineating the driveway locations, adding green space, adding stormwater management and making some other physical improvements to the property. So there are physical and environmental improvements that come with this project. And again, the difficulties are not self-created, but arise from the physical conditions of the property, the size of the property, its location, the location of the existing building that cannot be moved, can't be altered, its landmark status and the history of the property. So I think that that is kind of my presentation in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions and I've got the rest of the team available as well.
Okay.
We will be providing you with some updated information as we go forward.
Okay, so let's take questions from the board. Rick, do you have a problem if the questions just relate to any one of the three or would you like them to be taken separately?
No, I, I think it might be, we might have somebody asking questions regarding both issues. So let's just have the members ask whatever questions they have.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable here. I think we can discern the differences between the three things. So, okay, so board members, questions for Betsy?
This is member Schmidt, I have a question, Ms. Brock. Could you talk to me, could you explain a little bit about why a canopy is required for a gas station?
Sure, Lou. Lou, are you on? I think I'm going to turn that over to Lou Taranoli because this is.
Sure. Yes, I am on, Betsy, thank you.
Lou, could you please, Lou, before you speak, could you just identify yourself, name and address, please?
Yes, Lou Taranoli, I am Director of Real Estate for Quicklies. We are headquartered in Avon, New York.
Okay, that's good enough. Go right ahead.
Okay, the question was to why you need a canopy. It's really twofold. One, protects the customers from the elements in inclement weather and also protects in the secondary nature, the fuel equipment that's on site. But the overriding need is for protection of the customers when they're at the fueling stations in inclement weather.
Is there a New York law or other type of law that requires it? Or is it, is it what you say that it truly is for the customer and the actual pump?
That is correct, that is correct.
Right?
So just keeping on that a little bit, Lou, there is the need for fire suppressant is not required within the canopy, correct?
That is correct.
That's more of a newer innovation, right?
Yes, it is a new code, code requirement, New York State Building. It's depressing. Due to new technology with the pump, fire suppression does not need to be in the canopies anymore, provided that you maintain the newer equipment.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. All right, more questions, please.
Judy?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking back at the ninety-five minutes and it's almost similar to what is being asked for now. And I believe our code says that non-conforming uses should go away. They cannot be enlarged, altered, extended, reconstructed or restored, okay? Nor shall any external evidence of such use be increased by means whatsoever. And they're meant to go away. They're not meant to be expanded upon. And to take the gas station, the little building, the historic preservation building and turn it into a convenience store is certainly intensifying a conditional use and it's going in the wrong direction. This will definitely have an effect on the neighborhood. There are many things that have not been taken into account, such as deliveries to a convenience store, such as the number of truck trucks that have to bring the gas during the days of the week. And this hasn't been at least explained. But my big concern is this is going against our code bottom line. So I wonder how you can address that.
Well, I can, I can address that a little bit. So I absolutely appreciate, I mean, we wouldn't be here for a use variance if it was not that we have a use that's not permitted by the code. We're here because there is a financial hardship, there is a problem. This is a, I mean, if you, if anybody looks at this property, put aside the zoning. It is a very small piece of property. It's in a very challenging location to make a viable use of this property. It's between a firehouse and the friendly home. It's boxed in, it's very small. It has a historic building that has really, it's regulated what you can do with it. It has limited potential. Can't demolish this building. Changes to this building are strongly discouraged. So while I appreciate that it would be great if there was somebody who really wanted to just put an office in there and use it the way it is, the reality is that is not a viable option, which is why the use variance process exists and it exists. The law allows for applicants to apply for use variances because if there is, there are situations where there is financial hardship and it is simply not viable to comply with the code because the code imposes such hardship. And in this case, the physical conditions of the property really generate the hardship. So while I appreciate that the code doesn't allow the proposed use, it happens to be the most suitable use for the property. It's historically what the property was used for. And while I do understand that we're proposing is a little different from what used to be there. You know, you don't find service stations around anymore. I don't think that anybody would probably want a service station. You know, they're just not a common neighborhood use anymore. So what we're proposing is something that is consistent with a modern gas station operation. But I will point out that it is, it is a small, it's been scaled to fit the property. So, you know, you have a fifteen thousand square foot lot. Code requires forty thousand square feet. If it was a forty thousand square foot parcel, we wouldn't be having this conversation, right? So we are boxed in here with a very small property with a very unique building. The law allows for variances specifically for these types of cases.
Hey, very good. Additional questions by the board, please?
This is member Wright. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about the marketing efforts. I understand from the materials that it was marketed for five years. It looks like from the tiers that it was just assigned. So I was kind of wondering what type of marketing was done, if it was ever listed on things like LoopNet or marketed for something expanded from office? Just what did that marketing process look like?
So I am now going to tell you Frank. I think Frank Romeo is on the Zoom as well. He is the property owner. I think he can speak to this and elaborate a little further.
Okay.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, it's Frank Romeo, Bristol Haley Homes, seven forty-five Titus Avenue in Rochester.
Okay, great, Frank, go ahead, please.
Thank you. We typically do not use LoopNet or any of these other multiple listing services. I haven't personally had luck with them over the years and I haven't bought a piece of property using any of those. We go out, we send emails to other commercial brokers. We direct market and call and solicit prospective tenants. We work with a lot of office tenants, a lot of medical tenants. And it's the same thing, either the site is too small or they're not interested in expanding at this time. Now, this was before COVID hit. Since COVID, you know, the office market has contracted tremendously. We get calls to this day and we don't have a sign up since we entered into a contract with Quicklies, we took the sign down. We still get calls from people that want to open restaurants, chain restaurants, drive-through restaurants, you know, other convenience store operators, gas station type, you know, convenience stores. It's amazing the number of people that actually call us. But as soon as you tell them it's not zoned, they're usually gone. Or you start talking to them about the work that's involved in retrofitting this, even to go to a convenience store, there's not a lot of companies that want to spend that money. But when we did a deal with Quicklies, they were very eager to try and work with the town and try and work with the historic commission and work with me. And that's why we're here today.
Okay. Does that address your concern, Andrea?
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily call it a concern, I guess, just a question. So all marketing was directly done by the, no brokers were hired to market the property?
No, no, I, I've developed properties from Massachusetts to Nevada to Florida. I've developed, I can't even tell you how many properties that we've built, we've bought, we've marketed and it's been done through our office. We've been very successful at it. We know when we get a piece of property, who's a potential tenant. This particular property, we had a tenant that wanted to do an office there. We met the historical commission. We wanted to put about a fifteen hundred square foot addition on the building, keep it very, very exactly like this building, you know, to keep, to make it look exactly like it was built that way originally. And historic commission didn't want, or preservation board, I'm not sure what you call it in Brighton right now, I'm sorry. But they didn't want to hear about it. They wanted to preserve this building the way it is. They wanted to keep those garage doors looking the way it was. Two of them said that they would prefer to have a convenience store there or a gas station. And, you know, they're not the ones that issuing the permit. So this is my office company. I had a financial company that wanted to go there, was very interested. They got discouraged and it pulled out. You know, same thing happened with, I think Betsy alluded to it with ABVI Goodwill. You know, there's nothing in the code in Brighton that allows Goodwill to go anywhere for a drop-off location. As soon as they heard that from the town, they ran away. We worked with a lot of people. We tried to market this for offices, small offices, talked to insurance agents, talked to smaller accounting practices, talked to small attorneys, you know, one or two people that were interested in, you know, small firms. We didn't get anywhere. I met Lou, we put a deal together and we're here. Had I thought that we would have to come in here someday and apply for area or use variance, you know, I would have kept better track of every single thing we did. But we got a lot of properties, we got a lot of things we're marketing. I don't keep track of everybody I talk to. The list we submitted to you, you know, it was a pretty comprehensive list. You know, I know some people are criticizing it, that, you know, you only talk to a hundred people. Well, that's a lot of people to talk to, to try and make a deal, you know? Plus all the ones we didn't keep track of that we didn't write down. When the phone rings, I don't always write it down. I'm not looking to, you know, get into this battle with everybody, but you know, what are you going to do with this property? We found somebody that will use it the way it is. That's what's important, is we've got somebody that'll use it the way it's been used the last hundred years.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that.
This is member McCann Curry, I have a couple of questions and some of this piggybacks off of what member Wright was just speaking about. I'm curious, having reviewed some of the materials from the application that came before the board in nineteen ninety-five, I'm, there was a reference to potentially selling it to the Brighton Fire Department. I'm wondering if that has come up in more recent years?
Yeah, I talked to the Brighton Fire Department. They'd be happy to take it as a donation.
Okay.
They, they weren't interested in paying anything, not even the fair market value.
Okay. I'm also curious to understand just historically, when you, the materials in the application indicate that you acquired this in twenty eighteen and that the station was closed in late twenty seventeen. I'm trying to understand what, what intention there was when, when it was purchased. Were there pumps still located there? Because I don't believe that there's any there. So can you describe if you've removed them or were they previously removed?
They were previously removed.
Okay, and was there consideration of maintaining the non-conforming use before it had expired?
There was consideration. And when I talked to the town planner, he was adamant that I would have to come to the zoning board of appeals and reapply.
Okay, because you had it before a year had passed, correct?
That's, that's correct. He took the position that this, that his dates were different than mine. It was over with and I had to come in and apply for it. So we marketed it to an office user, not to a, you know, a gas user.
Okay. On the topic of, on the topic of the convenience store, the application materials indicate that it would be operated from five AM to ten PM daily. I, I would interpret that as, as every day of the week then, seven days a week?
Yes.
Yes.
And what about gas deliveries? When would those occur?
They typically happen during normal business hours during the day.
Do you, Frank, do you have any sense of how or the gentleman from Quicklies?
Geez, I hope, I hope they, I hope they come every single day. I hope they sell a lot of gas over there. But let's, let's unmute Lou and Quicklies and let, let him address it, please.
Good.
Lou, you're muted.
I think I just became unmuted, thank you.
Okay.
To, to answer the question on the delivery.
Lou, can you just identify yourself again for the record, please?
Yes, Lou Taranoli, I'm Director of Real Estate and Development for Quicklies. Our headquarters is in Avon, New York.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, with the deliveries, we make every effort for them to be during normal business hours. And that, that would be our goal, goal for the site, for the deliveries to, to be there. You're looking at for a site like this, maybe two to three deliveries per week.
Okay. Very good.
When you indicate that you would want that to ideally be the case, is that, I mean, in, you know, in the, yeah, in the convenience store and gas station business, is it a practical kind of reality that it could be beyond those five AM to ten PM hours?
For the fuel deliveries, yes. Now that is a third-party company. It's not, it doesn't come from Quicklies, if you will. It's, it's our supplier. They will typically load a truck and have many deliveries in the area, both to our locations, competitive locations. We cannot dictate to them when they have to be there.
And relating again to the five AM to ten PM operation, how long will the lights be? And um, relating again to the five AM to ten PM operation, how long will the lights be on? How long, you know, will this be lit up and um, you know, kind of, there, there's obviously concerns with respect to the lights pouring into people's homes in the evening and what is essentially more of a residential area. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, typically, typically the lights are, are, are dimmed pretty well, if not all the way off about, about two hours after closing. Uh, we are having a photometric plan put together that will show uh, the, uh, just how much of the um, light from the site will spill off the site. And uh, actually what we're showing is how much it won't be spilling off uh, the site. We've um, reduced the canopy as Betsy alluded to. Right now, we're looking at about a twenty-five percent reduction. There'll be no illumination on the top of the canopy. Um, uh, the sign on uh, that's proposed for the front of the building will also be non-illuminated. Uh, variance would be needed if a sign were to go on the canopy. I will assure you, if that's uh, proceeded with, it'll also be a non-illuminated sign. Um, there's gonna be a couple of, uh, excuse me, three um, uh, pole lights uh, that'll be decorative on the site. So as part of the photometric plan, I will also be getting the cut sheets, if you will, to show the lighting and show the shielding and how we're gonna make every effort to keep that, uh, not make every effort, we're going to have that site, uh, lighting remain on site.
Okay, so as contrasted with fuel deliveries, it sounds like the lighting is something that um, you will have control over?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I don't believe that um, Ms. Brug indicated uh, the height of the proposed canopy at this point. Do you know it or do we need sheet indicated we'll be getting additional materials? Should we just wait or is there any?
Yeah, does it?
Well, yeah, I would recommend, we, we wait, we are reducing the length, width and height of this canopy and we are taking it to be very fine-tuned and detailed to make it as, as small as possible. As I said, the, the, the width and the length um, has been, you know, we feel confident that's going to be about a twenty-five percent reduction. And we're working on the overall, all height right now. And it definitely coming down.
Okay, and when it comes to the pumps, you're seeking to have two total pumps, which would be, is it four cars could be fueling at the same time?
Yeah, that is correct. These, the, the pumps themselves would be a state-of-the-art dispenser. And one of the items I'd like to bring up, they have a dark screen component. So at night, uh, the, the um, dispensers could be easily switched over to a dark screen. So the white light from the site uh, that you typically would have is not emitted. And then when we're together again, uh, we'll, we'll have the renderings and the actual cut sheets for those dispensers. Um, and something that I'll also be sharing wi- with, with the neighbors, um, as Betsy alluded to. Uh, we will be setting up uh, time to meet with the neighbors when we have our complete package of information together. Uh, it's my goal to do it in person this time and not uh, through a Zoom call. Uh, as Betsy said, it's been a little bit of a struggle because of COVID, finding a room. Uh, I know when I contacted the firehouse, they, they were not allowing things and I'll uh, allowing meetings. I'll, I'll try them again. Hopefully things are, are loosening up, up a little, but I will assure you, we'll have that meeting with the neighbors before we're all there again.
Okay, so with respect to the illumination, it sounds like you specifically mentioned the signs. Um, and then the screens located on the pumps.
Yes.
I think when I think about a gas station, probably the most intense lighting is kind of that underlighting on the canopy that makes it so that all the customers can see. You know, I'm sure it's probably safety related as well. Um, so when you said that two hours after closing, lights would be dimmed, is, is that the lighting that you're talking about? When would the lighting that's that illumination that makes the service station pretty bright, when would that be?
That's what I was referring to, they, the underneath the canopy. And I'll, as I said, we'll, we'll have cut sheets for the fixtures themselves and the shielding that will show it staying um, where it needs to be, which is for customer convenience and safety.
Okay, and is there a reason? I'm, I'm just trying to understand in terms of, because obviously conditions of any kind of acceptance can be something that the board would look into. So I'm, I'm curious about with respect to the two hours after closing, are there specific reasons where that's your normal business practice? Is to still leave them on rather than dimming them immediately upon closing?
Uh, it's typically a, a safety feature. I mean, we could look into that, that, that's something, one of our in- internal controls. And let me review that internally and, and have uh, uh, and revisit with you, you and the neighbors the next time we're all together.
And then um, my final question for you, I know I've taken up a lot of time here. Um, but uh, are there, there's been concerns with respect to alcohol sales. So um, would there be an intention of seeking an alcohol license on the property?
There would. We have a very detailed and strict uh, policy for all age-restricted products. Every person that would want to be purchasing any of those products will, will have to show proper ID.
And um, in, in addition to tobacco products, would you?
Correct. That's also age-restricted and you'd, you'd need ID for that also. And, and again, everyone gets ID and they're purchasing those, those age-restricted items.
Okay, I think that that's all of my questions for now. Thank you.
Just, uh, can I just say, uh, add real quick, uh, Lou regarding these age-restricted products?
I'm sorry?
You sell vaping products?
Uh, I don't believe we will at this location, Rick, but let me, um, let me verify that and have that answered the next time we're all together.
Yeah, let me just state um, that we do not permit the sale of vaping products anywhere other than our IG industrial district.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Another variant, possibly another use variant that would go on top of the sale of gasoline in the convenience store. So I would probably strongly suggest you, you don't sell vaping products from this.
Understood, understood. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Uh, Dennis, I just got a couple of clarification questions, um, if you don't mind.
Nope.
Uh, Betsy, you mentioned that the um, historical permission has reviewed this a number of times. You have not received a certificate of appropriateness at this point, correct?
Uh, correct. I believe they're waiting for this use variance uh, process to uh, be completed.
That, that is correct. I, I was the one presenting at those meetings and that, that is correct.
Okay, and also mentioned, Betsy, a couple of times that you can't demo the building. I just want to be clear that demolition is um, an avenue that can be taken. However, it certainly is not a avenue that the board wants to take. But there is the ability, um, call it demolition hardship. So in cases that you can show the hardship, there is that ability to demo uh, historic property. So just so everybody's clear that demolition is not prohibited. It's strongly suggests that we don't do that, but it can be um, applicable. Um, just one other question regarding the fire station. Do you guys know whether or not that they, that their, their lighting situation? Do they have twenty-four hour lighting in the parking lot out in front? Um.
I don't answer to that.
Okay, you might want to take a look at that to see if there's, you know, if there's a, a difference between what you would be proposing and fire station does.
I, I, I could address that with them. I've spoken to them on a couple of times and I'm gonna revisit uh, with them to, to see if they would allow us to have our neighborhood meeting there.
Okay.
All right, very good.
Uh, this is member McKay Drury again. I'm sorry, I have one quick follow-up question with respect to the screens on the pumps. Um, you, would this location also have the TV and audio screens?
Yes, uh, they could both uh, be um, the, the, the most updated screens, which were, so your, your, your screen would be more of a uh, touchscreen, if you will, rather than your traditional where you're pushing the buttons to select your gas. So it's really all, all a screen right now. But to answer your question, yes, but sound, visual could all be controlled uh, by the, by the location.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, board members, other questions?
Dennis, I'm sorry, quick, um, Lou, do you have any other properties in your portfolio that would be similar to this project?
Uh, let me say the one that's most similar would be Fairport. Uh, but even that's uh, would see, you know, it's, it's in a neighborhood i- i- if you will, but um, has that uh, feel of the building. But it's, it's, it's almost twice the size. So anything that's under twelve hundred square feet, no. Um, and where we're taking a building and, and restoring it to its historic appearance, we, we do not.
Okay, I do.
Okay.
This is member Wright, just to kind, this is kind of related to that, but in your portfolio, um, would you say that having a modestly sized canopy and some sort of a convenience store is a necessity in order to run a profitable business? That, that there's not, you can't operate the type of historical gas station here that was maybe operated in the sixties and seventies?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, for our business model, we need to have a, a convenience store and a fuel presence. Yes.
And what about a canopy? Do you have properties in your portfolio that don't have a canopy or is that a necessity to?
That is a necessity. We do not have any properties without a canopy.
And again, you're saying that because it's really for the protection of the customer from weather-related issues. More than, more than uh, fire suppression or anything else.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
We do have a little weather in our region, so it's kind of important.
Okay, board members, questions, please, so we can keep moving here.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Judy.
Yes, um, if you had full service, you wouldn't need a canopy. And I remember that canopy sprouted up like mushrooms when we went to self-serve. So that's, that's just a sign of the times. But I'm very interested in the, in the rationale for going to something. I, I look at this as an elephant trying to fit into like a birdcage. Because I went online and I looked at all the other quickly stations and they're enormous. And they're out, you know, and almost like on a, on a throughway or something. I mean, they're really big with huge commercial projects around it. Why, why this particular site? What? I mean, it's, it's hard to, to work with it, so why?
Well, I, I would say it's not hard to work with it. I want to be respectful of that comment and all the, the board's concerns. But from a, just a purely working with it, when you look at uh, uh, remodeling the building into a C-store, uh, adding just the two dispensers. And as Betsy mentioned earlier, we, we started with three uh, dispensers, but at the um, request of the historic uh, commission, we reduced, reduced it to two. Part of our presentation next time, we're gonna be showing um, uh, an exhibit that shows the cars at the dispensers. Car is able to go around, uh, the cars that are fueling, uh, there's gonna be room for delivery trucks. I mean, given a odd case where you'd have both going on at the same time. So I would not agree with the assumption that there's a lot going on here. I think we are tailoring our business to the size of, of the property and, and the building. We looked at the sites, obviously the demographics uh, around the site are, are, are very good. The traffic counts are very good. We, we feel it, it would be a nice niche play for us in the market. We, we are from Avon, New York. It's uh, uh, Quickleys is, is owned by the Brooklyn family. I'm very proud to be a member of their team. Uh, so they're a Rochester area uh, based family. This is a family business. And uh, we, we could be creative, we could be different. You're right, some of our locations are very big. Uh, but uh, we, we could also do a ne- niche location like this.
And Rick, I have a question for you and for Ken. Um, yes, this is a use variance. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me that when the use has been discontinued and especially in this case, when the pumps were taken out and it hasn't been used as a gas station for all these years, how can it come back or why should it come back?
Well, the, the non-conforming use went away. So basically, you know, a non-conforming use can continue forever, provided that it does not last for more than a year. This gas station lasts for more than a year, they lost the right to the non-conformant. Doesn't release them from having the right to apply to use variant for the same use. But it makes them have to go get a use variant for that use. Instead of using, well, it's been baking for eight months, we still have the right under non-conformance and we can just open up. They lost that right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, I think just one thing to point out is they could also come with a variance for a McDonald's or a Wendy's. You know, they're, they're coming and saying, hey, we, we, what I'm hearing is that we think a gas station is probably more in character for this property considering its historical use. Because otherwise, the other potential uses would be even more different from what it was historically used for. But they could come with a, a variance for any use if they, you know, wanted to apply for it.
Okay, all right. More questions from board members or are we set on the questions? Okay, Gary.
This is member McKay Drury. I have one quick question with respect to the Quickleys kind of mission and where they're headed. Um, obviously, there's been also some discussions about when you consider non-conforming uses that will essentially be a new non-conforming use, given that it did elapse. Um, is Quickleys, you know, looking towards any kind of alternative energy sources? What about um, electric vehicle charging stations? Is there any aspect of the business that is looking into that that could potentially be using this space for that sort of a purpose?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we are gonna wire for um, two electric uh, vehicle uh, charging stations day one. Uh, we're gonna watch uh, the demand and needs. And when uh, we feel the need will be there, the, the infrastructure will be in place uh, for those two uh, charging stations. In addition, when you look at the entire uh, row of parking uh, along the north side, uh, is someday, those are all gonna be electric uh, charging stations. So we are evaluating that at, at every site. Um, we're also making, um, the site is pedestrian-friendly as we can. We're adding a bike rack. We're also adding a bike repair station. Um, so to answer your question, yes, we are looking, not only just looking into it, we're making plans for it.
Thank you.
Okay, are we set with the board then? Okay, very good. Okay, so uh, at this point, thank you, everybody, for their questions and the presentation. So the public hearing and these three applications is open. And so at this time, I would just like to ask if there's anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak. If you identify yourself, we'll try to field everybody the opportunity. I always in situations like this, ask your deference to your neighbors and all, all of us, I guess. And that when you're making your comments, that hopefully you will be bringing up issues that are concerning you personally or affecting your property and whatnot. And, and hopefully, as we go through them, they won't be, you know, similar exactly in nature. So we appreciate that if you can. So what do we have as far as interested parties, please?
Uh, the first person I saw. I'm sorry.
That's been helpful in the past, that there is the raise your hand. That that's a helpful way for, I think, the, the Brighton team to, to uh, unmute people.
Thank you. I was just gonna mention that, um, the first person I think that was interested in speaking, she uh, posted a message in the chatroom is Mary Colbland Boyd.
Okay, please proceed.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Mary, just give us your name and address, please.
Yes, um, Mary Boyd. I live at One Meadow Lane in Brighton. Uh, we've lived, my husband Donald and I have lived here for thirty-three years. And we are a member of the Brookside neighborhood that um, has been uh, speaking out against the proposed um, renovation of, of the building as a gas station. Uh, last Friday, I submitted a petition to the board for your consideration uh, with signatures of fifty uh, members of the neighborhood. And um, I was, I was feeling that it was um, pretty remarkable. I was able to get fifty because so many people were still on summer holidays and out of town over the Labor Day weekend. Uh, but in summary, I would say our basic concerns in the, in the petition deal with the change to the zoning. Um, the usage uh, variances. Uh, one uh, variance uh, in particular that I don't think has been mentioned this, this evening is that uh, Brighton codes general provision, chapter two oh one dash five state that a convenience Convenience store having a gross floor area of less than swi- five hundred, excuse me, less than five thousand square feet. And may not sell gasoline. And the existing building is less than three thirteen hundred square feet, so that's another. Uh, variance that would have to be dealt with. Um. Uh. Also, um. Uh, in terms of variances, uh, the state of New York requires. That uh there be external. A brand and size of price signage. Um, that I have not heard uh directly addressed. Um, typically, that can be, um, you know, that can be done a number of ways. But the uh branding and price signage have to be visual from the street. Um, and uh then, as other people have mentioned, the parking and and setback requests violate existing codes. Um. That's sort of a summary of what was in the petition and I'm I'm assuming the uh board will have a chance to to read it.
Yes.
I had two other issues that I want to touch on briefly. Um. Um, one is the historic designation of the building. Um, these types of gas stations were built specifically in the late twenties, early thirties. To blend into a residential neighborhood. And uh, there is one existing um example of that. If you look at uh Brighton Fire Station number three. In the Brighton uh or the Brown Croft Extension, that's still a um. A building that was uh built specifically to blend into the neighborhood. Um, and what we have on at thirty-one oh eight East Avenue. Is a Tudor revival gem with a slate roof. And it would be a shame to uh modify or destroy that in any way. The other things that come up in term, come up in terms of um historic designation. Uh, rehabilitation uh considerations should be designed. So that they preserve the important characteristic characteristics of the original building. And you want to avoid damage or unnecessary removal of historic features or materials. Exteriors need to be repaired or retained, not renovated, but repaired or retained. Um, new uses are prevalent all over the country for these kinds of historic gas station buildings. And um, for further reference, I would uh would point you to. The National Park Service has um a historic preserve- preservation brief on historic gas stations. And they also have one on restoration of Phillips sixty-six gas stations, which show multiple. Uses other than gas stations for these historic buildings. Uh, along with that, uh. Keep in mind that there are preservation funds and grants that can be um applied. Uh, toward different kinds of uses of of these buildings rather than gas stations. My last point. Is um, as an RIT professor, I taught formal project management for over ten years. And it's a cardinal rule of good project management that when a proposed project is controversial, and I think this is. Stakeholder objections must be addressed. There must be early, frequent, consistent and accurate communication with the stakeholders. And stakeholders are these people, us neighborhood people. Whose interests may be positively or negatively affected as a result of the project execution. Um, from my viewpoint, and I think many of our my neighbors. This um effort to involve stakeholders has been minimal. And under any good project. Um, the um, the owner and the developers would have met with the neighborhood early on and tried to resolve and iron out a lot of the objections that are being raised now. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your uh remarks. Okay, guys, I'm going to let you guys field the.
Okay, next is Karen Bentley. You're still muted, Karen.
Hi, I'm Karen Bentley. My husband, Robert Bentley, and I live at thirty-one oh eight East Ave, uh, I'm sorry, we live across from thirty-one oh eight East Avenue. At thirty-nine, thirty-nine uh Elmwood. Um, the property is one hundred percent residential. Uh, the dental office is now all private use. We have a bedroom back there. We have a TV lounge back there. And um, so there is no commercial. Entity at all at this point. Uh, once the dental office closed, we converted it to private use. And um, one of the.
Ma'am, ma'am, excuse me, I might not really interrupt you, but just a quick question. How long ago was that change made?
Two and a half, uh, it'll be three years in December.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Um, one of the major concerns we have is because we have windows directly facing thirty-one oh eight. Um, is that cars exiting the uh proposal uh for the gas convenience store. Would have headlights directly be glaring. Into our windows. And that is also. Um, a very much of a concern because the traffic will increase. Um, there's no uh thought as to how you would mitigate. Car lights or headlights from being dimmed. I mean, that would be a ridiculous. Thing for anybody to ask, but. One separate concern is the fact that Quiklys wants to convert the two garage bays, which were used for an auto repair store. Um, into uh complete glass walls. Um, the entire interior of a convenience store is typically lit. And very brightly lit. And uh, having a wall of glass, which we could see and. Have light emanate across the street from that, in addition to the canopy lights. Uh, is is a big concern of ours. And the other thing is that the um, the um. Proposed traffic pattern, we recently had a an a car accident. Where a motorcyclist was hit by a van exactly in front of thirty-one oh eight East Avenue. And um, I I think people need to realize that um, it's that area between Allen's Creek. And Elmwood and Linden is a very active traffic. Um, activity going on. And people are actually speeding through to get to the Linden Avenue exit. So that they can get uh make a right-hand turn onto the um expressway. Access roads. So overall, it's um. It's state. Just I think to think about the fact that the traffic would increase significantly. And that also as a private property owner um who lives in the neighborhood. Um, we go to bed around between nine and ten o'clock at night. We don't want lights glaring into our bedroom windows. And uh, if, as Lou has stated. Once the gas station would close at ten o'clock at night, then the lights are on for an additional two hours in the convenience store. So I don't know how. That is acceptable in a a bedroom community like ours. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to go in the order. They came in and Michael Stone had a message in the chat box. So Michael Stone, you are up next.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Yes, so uh Mike Stone, so I live at eleven ten Allen's Creek Road. So I live um. Almost right across the street from the the proposed uh change at the gas station. And there's just a couple of points I I want to make. Um. So I'm 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 sitting in my bed right now. I'm looking out my window. At the fire hall. And I've been online now for a couple of hours and the fire hall is dark. And there's no activity there and there typically isn't activity there and it is pretty, it is typically pretty dark. So if I were to take my phone right now and walk everyone here around the neighborhood. You would feel like you're in a completely residential neighborhood. There's not a lot of traffic on East Avenue. Um, there are a few cars now and then right now. But it's it's dark, it's quiet, and it's lovely and. You know, let's 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 think about this quickly is going in. Um, I I probably didn't say it right. My my wife always corrects me, but so I apologize for that, but. But but when Gordy's service station was there, it was truly a neighborhood service station. He didn't sell a lot of gas. He sold, he sold some chocolate bars. He sold a few Coke, Cokes. But but if you wanted, if you went into his store to buy a Coke. I'll I'll just wait, but if you went into the store to buy a. To buy a Coca-Cola, sounds like, sounds like somebody's rustling some papers. If you went into his store to buy a Coca-Cola. Sometimes you would actually have to go in and get him out from underneath a car so he could come out and check you out. That was the kind of place it was. And it was that way. Uh, up until, up until he sold it, um. Or or he left uh when Dick Dick Steamer owned the place. It was a real neighborhood place. He would go home at like six o'clock unless he was working on your car late at night. Maybe he'd be open a little later, but it was dark, it was quiet. And um, it was like a little bit of a candy shop, you know, for some of the kids. But it was not a convenience store. It was barely a gas station. Um, I think he sold gases as a, he once told me as a service. To customers, but he wasn't making money at it, and if he was, he would have kept it up, I think. And 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 when I listen to the proposal tonight. And I hear about the hardships, I hear about. You know, this poor little piece of property that nobody wants. You know, I talked to Charles Arena not too long ago and and he was real interested in being there. Um. But I think the cost of getting the traffic. The traffic study that was required at the time, which I think has actually changed, um, was prohibitive for him. Uh, but he was, he was really interested in making a flower shop there. So I, you know, I I I I think that. It could be marketed and I think we should be patient. I think we should wait for something better. I think when I listen to the plans and I hear about the hardships. And how small it is, how hard it's going to be. And then I hear about, we're going to change the lighting, we're going to change. You know, canopy from the exact same. You know, footprint of the building to something smaller. I I hear some of some of our, you know, some of the um interests of the neighborhood being met. But let's face it, I mean, five to ten o'clock. Trucks coming in and out delivering gas. The pressure is going to be on. You 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 know, the 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 company proposing this, if this is approved. To to profit as much as possible and expand hours and do more. And once this is, you know, if ever agreed upon, this the cat's out of the bag. There's there's no changing anything. There's going to be, you you know, no regulation or no um policing what they do. And then our property values in in the immediate area and and close by are going to go down. It's just a fa- it's just a fact. And it breaks my heart to think that this is where our neighborhood is going. I I love, I love the idea that. In ninety-five, you know, or 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 years ago, um. There was a sentiment on behalf of the town that um. Once these properties were approved for. For variance, um, that we would try to go backward a little bit and we would try to make an approve, you you know, an an improvement in the use of these properties. You know. It breaks my heart to think there's going to be a gas station fifty feet from the creek. Um, you you know, and and um. You know, the fact of the matter is there's they're going to be plow, you know, you know, there's going to be plowing there. In the wintertime, early in the morning, which makes a lot of noise. And there's this, it's going to become a very, very busy, lit up area. And so I just thank you for listening to my concerns and um. Appreciate being a part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Okay, next up, we have Miranda Harris Glocker.
Hi, uh, Ron Glocker and Miranda Harris Glocker. We live at uh nine forty-four Allen's Creek Road. Um, we both have a few comments we'd like to make. Um, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems like the applicant's. Uh, argument is predicated on the idea that there's a. Not self-imposed financial hardship upon them. Um, unless they were forced to buy the property or were unaware of the restrictions at the time of buying the property, I don't see how this is anything other than. They self-imposed financial hardship. Um, the idea that they can't make a go of it as a office building is a complete straw man argument. That's. Not what's up for debate here. Um, it's a discussion of whether or not we want a gas station uh in our. Um, there are points about there not being changes or the 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 kind of, in my opinion, preposterous idea that there would be positive changes to our community. Um, with the placement of a large gas station here. Um, I don't know where um the applicants live, but I don't think they live here. I don't think the kids go to school at Allen's Creek Elementary like ours do. The idea that a convenience station with lights that are on, cars that are pulling in and out for seventeen hours a day. Uh, the lights being on for probably nineteen hours a day, it sounds like there's extra two hours. Um, the idea that that's not going to have an impact on our our neighborhood is is a farce. And you know, the idea that selling alcohol and tobacco within um a couple hundred yards of a school. Uh, won't have a negative impact on our community is also, in my opinion, just completely nonsensical. I mean, you made the case of why we don't want vaping products in our area because we don't want our kids having access or readily access to them. I don't see why alcohol and tobacco are any different, other than that they were probably grandfathered in at a different time than vaping products. Um. Those are my thoughts. Um, my wife has a few comments as well.
So, um, we have three children, uh, two of whom currently attend Allen Creek Elementary and. As I said in a prior meeting, my husband and I both run, we're on the bikes with the kids. Our kids have friends within this immediate neighborhood that they often have to. Cross uh East Avenue or are on Elmwood. Um, to get to their friends' houses and are getting more independent as they get older. And I have myself been nearly struck several times by cars racing down. East Avenue, trying to get onto Linden, trying to get onto four ninety. Um, today was the first day of school for our kids and it was a mess. I watched as the buses were trying to. Exit Allen's Creek. It's already very difficult because people don't let them through. They're trying to race down there to get on. The different highways, get on Elmwood, et cetera, um, get out to Penfield or out to Fairport, and there's a lot of frustration always. You can feel it. Cars are trying to zoom around other cars. We started, and I mentioned this the last meeting, I'll just mention it briefly since everyone is here, but. Tried walking for the last two years because of COVID and not having enough bus drivers and not having enough space on the buses with the distancing guidelines. Um, and quickly stopped walking because. Uh, we nearly were hit by a car. It knocked over the light pole. Uh, the white light there on the corner of Allen's Creek and East. So adding something that would be uh an a constant. Entry and exit point in this particular junction is a disaster waiting to happen. Um, I've seen multiple people nearly hit. We've had this accident that Karen mentioned recently. Um, and that, you know, the bottom line is we as a neighborhood are a neighborhood. We're not um wanting this business. Here, and I don't think it uh is safe for us or our children. So I I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, both of you. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, up next is Wanda Eaton.
Is Wanda Eaton on the Zoom?
I am, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute, so. Um, my name is Wanda Eaton. I live at thirty-eight eighty-one Elmwood, so just around the corner, a few houses down from East Avenue.
Okay.
I am. I'm a retired petroleum engineer. I have a. Degree in math and a master's degree in chemical engineering. I worked for a major oil company for thirty-five years on small and large hydrocarbon. Projects around the world. They applicants for these um. Variances have presented their case based on the surface aesthetics. And on the economic hardship. And first of all, I'd like to address. The the surface issues, which is all fine and good, whatever. I I don't agree with what they are proposing. But I think the bigger. Risk of having this um as a gas station is related to storage tanks for the gasoline that is just feet from Allen's Creek. The, anyone that's going to be putting in a gas station. On this property is going to own the liability for any leakage from those tanks. And you can put brand new tanks in, you can do whatever you want. They will leak. I have seen a lot of things in my career. That is a significant risk, not only to our neighborhood, but down the road wherever I don't even know where Allen's Creek goes, but. I think this is a high environmental risk that has. But I think this is a high environmental risk that has not been addressed at all. And I think that should be taken into consideration for what's being proposed to be put here. And secondly, with respect to the economic hardship, I don't believe it is the, the town of Brighton or the residents in this neighborhood that are responsible for a poor economic decision by Mr. Romeo. He wrote the check to buy the property, and if it didn't pan out as he wished, I don't think we should bear the responsibility of trying to fix that. And there, and I, I agree with the Glockers that there could be in others. There may be other opportunities to do something else with this property rather than just let it sit there. But I think that the issues related to both the surface and the lighting, the traffic, even being just down the street from Allen Creek and having children walk and cross that street with busy cars and increasing that traffic is just a significant risk to the kids. I, just doesn't make sense whatsoever. So with those two comments, I would like to say thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate your taking these under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Peter Weisar.
Good evening. So I spoke last time. My name is Peter Weisar, and I'm an attorney with McConville, Constance, and Cooman &amp; More. And we represent Robert and Karen Bentley, who live across the street. Karen Bentley spoke earlier this evening, and I know I made a lot of points in my written submissions. And so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, make them again tonight. But there were a couple of points that were raised tonight that I want to highlight. And the first one is during the applicant's presentation, there was a, a kind of a statement made that they, such that if, if the property had not ceased operations, suggesting that a used variance would not be required. But I do think that a used variance would still be required for this application because they are proposing a, a convenience store, which I don't believe was ever something that was a pre-existing non-conforming use. Something that's been raised a couple of times tonight is about the self-created hardship. And, you know, I know zoning boards typically deal with area variances more commonly, and area variances, you're kind of looking at all of the factors. And if you don't meet one factor in the required analysis, it's not going to be fatal to your, to, to the applicant's claim. But, you know, that's not true, obviously, with a, with a used variance. And here, I think that the, you know, what kills the application for the used variance here is that this was a self-created hardship. The property had already ceased operating as the pre-existing non-conforming use, and it was purchased, and we've cited a case in our materials about that, you know, where hardship in the context of zoning is self-imposed, where the applicant for the variance acquired the property, subject to the restrictions from which he or she now seeks relief. Now, that should be the end of the story here. And, you know, and the, the used variance should be denied based on that alone because, as I said, a, a used variance, you're required to meet all of the elements. There was a comment earlier about a, you know, this being next to a fire station, and so therefore it's not compatible with office uses. And even though it's the next town over, if you head down 441 to the four corners in the town of Penfield, Penfield Fire District Station Number One is right in the four corners, and I believe it's surrounded both on its entrances on Penfield Road by smaller office buildings. And also, I believe there's dentist offices and, and other office uses on the Five Mile Line Road entrance to the back parking lot of Penfield Fire Station Number One. So, and that's a comparable station to Brighton Station Number One. They're both kind of headquarters stations. And, you know, and yet those office uses, you know, they're there in Penfield. So it's a similar type of neighborhood. And then just two more points. The canopy, we've talked a lot about the canopy, and, you know, there is, you know, I believe in our last submission, we submitted the minutes from the prior meeting in, I believe it was the 90s, when the area variance for the canopy was denied. And I just want to reiterate that even though if, if kind of the concept of res judicata doesn't apply here, which would be something that, that basically an applicant can't relitigate and can't keep asking for the same request after it's already been decided against them. I know that that doesn't necessarily apply here because it's not the same applicant. But I, I do think that there is a notion here that the zoning board, if it's going to grant the variance, it needs to have a good reason for departing from its prior denials. And I, I believe that there is some, some discussion of a, of maybe two prior denials. I, I only have the minutes from 1995, but I, but, you know, it looks like there might have been two denials. And finally, the last thing I just want to mention is there is some talk about kind of next time when we're here. And if the applicant is going to be submitting additional materials, I guess, on behalf of my clients and perhaps on behalf of their neighbors, that if there is a next time, that the neighbors also be afforded an opportunity to address any of those new plans or comments that were made. And perhaps the hearing ought to be kept open or at least reopened if they're going to receive additional information. So that, that's all I have this evening. Thank you for your time. I know this is a challenging application, and I know it's late, so thank you.
Thank you for keeping it, you know, centered, please. Thank you. Okay.
Hey, looks like we have one more. Linda, you can go ahead and unmute.
Got it, I got it. Hi, this is Linda Stevenson. I live at 12 Creekdale Lane. Uh, my husband and I have lived here for 35 years. And I have several comments to make, but I will speak quickly. Ms. Brug, you spoke about, gosh, I can't even think, comps. In real estate, comps are, are properties that are similar to each other so that you can get a fair assessment, market value of what your building is worth. The, the office that they are recommending is in no way comparable to the list of offices that was in the report, that the list of the offices were on West Henrietta Road. There were multi-story buildings, there were multiple buildings. That's hardly what the situation is here. Two, we were tasked to say, only talk about what really affects you. Well, air quality affects me. The amount of traffic that's going to be coming down, that isn't coming down now, is going to be significantly increased, especially with the apartment building with 186 units that are coming in 2023. Today I had an opportunity to interview a Coca-Cola truck driver and their dimensions for a truck, and they said that they use that truck, whether they go into small places or in the city or out in Scottsville where I was. And it, the, the truck is 53 feet long by eight feet wide by 14 feet. And I'm sitting here looking at a large version of the engineering plan, and it's just really difficult to see how that truck can be making deliveries during the day, which Lou said he would be, and having cars there and then trying to get out. And then that narrow space between the side of their property and then the driveway, and then where the firehouse is, how does a fire engine turn around if, if all four lanes of traffic is, is clogged up? I, that really is somewhat concerning to me. I, I heard that the firehouse did make an offer, but that Lou or someone turned it down. So there was interest there. The, the number of sales calls that were made, I have an MBA in marketing, and I work for Fortune 50 companies, and I increase their sales, but I didn't do it with a few phone calls a month. It, it took a lot of hard work, so I, I question that. The other, the other part is the beer. I know everybody's going to be asked to say, can I see your license, please? And, and find out what your age is, but what if the person says no? What happens then? What, what if the person has been drinking before they get there and they want more beer? What's going to happen then? This is becoming a very unsafe environment within which we're being asked to live because somebody took a flyer out on a project without doing some significant due diligence, and we are being expected to bail him out. I really respectfully submit that this is a very poor precedent to set, that people can come in, make a mistake, and then turn to the town and say, let's, please change everything so that I can make a profit selling this to a company that's going to come in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, what have we got, gentlemen?
That appears to be everyone. I'm not seeing any more hands raised.
Wait, 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 no, wait, wait.
I'm sorry, who's speaking, please? Do you see anything else?
No, I do not.
Okay, very good. Well, I, I thank everyone for keeping their comments, you know, directed and very clear. We appreciate that as to everyone on this Zoom call.
Oh, I'm sorry, it looks like, Linda, you have another comment, one more.
I just want, I want to ask one question. I've never, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I've never participated in any, any town meeting before. So perhaps my question is wrong, and I shouldn't be asking it, but it really does keep me up at night. And so if I offend anybody, I apologize in advance, but I'm asking it in good faith. If, if, if the neighborhood has come together citing things that can really go wrong and are serious, and then the planning board or whatever says, oh, that's okay, we're going to go ahead anyway. If any one of us suffers harm because of the decision that is made, do we have any recourse? Can, can we sue the town board? I mean, are we protected at all, or is it like the, the Old West where it's every person for themselves?
Mr. Gordon, would you be able to possibly address that? Ken? You're muted, Ken. There we go.
There we go. Wasn't able to unmute myself there for a second. So, no, I don't think that's appropriate for us to address. The board is here to listen to comments from the public. And at this time, I'm not going to be providing a legal opinion on that issue.
Okay, very good. All right, is there any other questions then? Are we set? Okay, again, there'll be more opportunity, friends. All right, so at this point, then, I think we'll, what do you think on this public hearing? Rick?
Dennis, I think, well, at this point, we don't close it. We certainly can close it if we want when we get into our discussion phase. But it seems like both the applicant and possibly the, the neighbors will be submitting additional information that we would probably want to review in a public hearing situation.
I agree.
I agree.
Time I would not close the public hearing.
Okay, very good. All right, so our next two pieces of business are the old business, which is location on 2720 West Henrietta Road. I know, Rick, you had some, I think, some discussion with the applicants.
Yes, you guys did receive a letter from the applicant professional in regards to them still working with the neighboring property to secure and clarify the easement for access and parking. I did receive additional information from the consultant, which I did not forward to you because it just came over about a day or two ago. And I told the consultant that that information should be packaged to us and submitted for next month and possibly to reopen the public hearing. I know last month, we basically told the applicant, you know, you need to give us an update, or we will be forced to possibly deny the application without prejudice. I think they have given us that update. So in my opinion, I don't have a problem with us to continue tabling that till the October meeting and see if they follow through with, on what they need.
Rick, would it be fair to say, without getting into all the details, that some effort is not just conversation with the, between attorneys and whatever, but some other tangible effort has been made?
Yeah, yeah, the, the information I saw had a revised floor plan, revised parking layout. So there has been additional effort made in regards to this application.
Okay, yeah, so we're just trying to establish that this is a continuing effort, and it's not just falling on deaf ears and month by month. Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, so at this point, then, we've discussed these. And I think, you know, just for those who are back on again, let's, let's go back through. Do we need a break? I guess I should ask that, too.
I think we probably should take a, like, five-minute break, Dennis.
Yeah, I think for the stenographer, if nobody else.
Great, okay, let's try to keep it to five minutes because we're getting kind of late. So let's do that, and then we're going to come back and start with 9801, okay? Uh, let's, uh, do that and then we're gonna come back and start with nine A O one, okay? Okay, guys, how are we looking?
I'm ready to go.
Sorry about that, had a homework situation.
Can we, um, Jason, can we clear the, um, site plan for the? Oh, okay, you got, you got one up, I see it, sorry. We got West Henrietta, can you bring up, uh? Oak Hill Terrace?
Uh, sorry, which, uh, which case is that?
That's nine A O one. Very good. Okay, the, uh, Rick, I can't see everybody, can you, is everyone back?
That way?
Okay, Ken, can you unmute yourself for a minute?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, a- a- at our discussion last month, I think we agreed that with these, uh, applications. That, uh, uh, a motion would be made and then discussion, correct?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
I just, I just, I just have one question for this one. Real fast, Ken, does this, we're gonna have to do a neck deck on this since. It's for a, a larger development. What if we decide to prove it? Hold on, I'm playing catch up here.
Which, which project are we?
Wrong application.
Yeah, we're talking about the dog park is the first one.
Yeah, so, um, right, it's not a single family residence, so yes. We need an egg deck on this.
Okay. All right, are we ready? Okay, so nine A O one is, uh, the application of Oak Hill Terrace for the, uh, park. So I have a motion to make. Uh, Rick, I don't have the neck deck right in front of me. Do you want to just read it and I'll accept it?
Give me a second.
Please, thank you. A lot of paper management here.
I move that the board, having considered the information presented by the applicant. And having conducted the required review pursuant speaker. Adopt the negative declaration prepared by town staff and determine the proposed action will not likely have significant environmental impact. I also move.
We approve application nine A O one twenty two based on the following findings of fact. One, the existing chain link fences eight inches over the code and the height is minimally noticeable. Two, the fence creates a dog run area for the. Use of the building residents and is a helpful amenity for those tenants. Three, no negative effect on the character of the neighborhood in this commercial area will likely result. From the approval of this variance. And number four, based on information from the town animal control officer. A four foot privacy fence at, at four foot height privacy fence is. Appropriate for controlling average size or larger dogs. Uh, conditions, this is based only on the fence as described in testimony as the style and location. And two, uh, any relevant permits shall be obtained. Okay, so can I get a second for that, please?
Before we have a second, can I just say you said commercial area?
Yes.
This is commercial?
Well, I'm referring that Judy as it relates to those, all the apartment buildings there. I mean, we, we could say multi-story residential, if you prefer, I could switch.
I think so, I don't want, personally, I don't want commercials to go in.
Okay, 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 I'm happy to switch it to that. Do we have a second then?
I second.
Okay, thanks, Kathy, okay.
I have a friendly suggestion.
Yes.
That's the only way to do it, Ken, I have a friendly suggestion, um. In regard to your condition number one, can we incorporate, um, and specifically, uh. To impose an area of approximately three hundred square feet.
Okay.
Something like that, Dennis, because I, I wanna kind of control this.
Okay, no, I understand what you mean, yeah. All right, so let me just, okay, let me, and let me just reread number one, then also say the existing. Chain link fence is eight inches over the code and the height is minimally noticeable to. Enclose a three hundred square foot area for use as a dog.
Yeah, that's your finding. I, I want you to put that into the condition.
Oh, in the condition, oh, I'm so sorry, okay.
So your finding was fine, so don't change your finding, just add that specifically to an area of approximately three hundred square feet. In the condition.
So you don't want it to exceed three hundred square, because just saying it is not really a condition, right?
Right. Right.
Okay, all right, so, so it would be number three condition then, that the proposed. Dog run will not exceed three hundred square feet. And that's why I referenced the number one to saying as the drawing and everything, so I think that would close it up.
I, the drawing isn't real accurate.
Okay, well, that's fine, we got it now. All right, so who had the second? Would you accept those?
I love Judy.
You're all set, Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have discussion, so we're just get used to a little different format here. So is there any thoughts, comments, or, or other than the ones that have been made?
No.
Concerns?
Fine.
Okay, great.
Being black really makes it look better rather than if it were just a.
The motion is approved with condition. Primo?
Yes.
The short?
Yes.
This time design?
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carried.
Okay, very good, well, that was fun. Okay, so now we'll go to nine O two, which is the one forty eight Dale Road, Ed.
Um, I move we approve application nine O two twenty two. To allow a four foot tall aluminum, uh, the state fence. Which exceeds that allowed by code by six inches in height. Based upon the finding, following findings of fact. One, the requested area variance for a single family home is a type two action pursuant to six. NYCRR section six one seven point five C seventeen. And no review is required pursuant to the state environmental quality review act. Two, the requested area variance is the minimum variance necessary to address the benefit sought by the applicant. The six inch increase over the code requirement is to better enclose the yard and better protect. Children and a dog using the. One for a Dale Road is a corner lot. Leading to the three point five foot standard. The requested vary area, the requested variance is due to this condition. Two, no other alternative can alleviate the difficulty of produce the desired result. The request is due to the fact that is a corner lot and that the backyard is open to East Dale Road. Three, there will be no unacceptable change in the neighborhood and no substantial impact to nearby properties is expected. The fence is similar to other fences in the area, including other corner lots. The fence will be aluminum estate fencing, which will help minimize visual impacts. The height increases not substantial in this situation. Four, the hardship was not self-created by the applicant. Five, the health, safety and welfare of the community will not be adversely affected by the approval of the variance. The following conditions apply. One, the variance is based on the application material submitted and the testimony provided. And only authorizes a fencing described therein. Two, the applicant is to obtain all necessary permits.
Okay, do we have a second, please?
I'll second, number right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion, does anyone have any concerns about this or any suggestions for the motion?
No.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay, Ed, or excuse me, Rick?
Motion is to approve with conditions for short.
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Primo? Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carried.
Okay, very good, okay, so we're going to one fifty nine David Avenue Kathleen.
Okay. I move to approve application oh nine oh three dash two two based on the following findings of fact. One. The variance request is to allow a front porch five point seven feet wider than permitted by code. Two, the applicant thinks to, to create a front porch to allow for seating and a cover when there is inclement weather. Three, the applicant shows the plan submitted after having explored alternative sizes and styles and submitting them. To the architectural review board who ultimately selected the plan provided to this board. Four, the granting of this variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. As there are multiple homes on the street with similarly sized front porches. Nor would it be a detriment to nearby properties as the porch is in proportion to the home. Consistent with the aesthetics of the house and as noted previously, has been approved by the architectural review board. Five, there is no evidence that there would be a negli- negative impact on the health, self, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. Conditions, one, the variance applies only to the front porch as described in the application and testimony provided. And will not apply to future projects. Two, all necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Okay, and a second, please?
Before we do that, this is member McKay Drury, I believe that the first finding of fact, um, Kathy said it's five point seven feet. And I believe we want to make sure that the record says it's five point seven five feet.
Okay, is that okay with you, Kath, or correct?
That is fine.
Okay, good.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, uh, thanks Heather. Okay, so, uh, discussion, any issues or concerns here? Seems pretty straightforward. Okay, Rick?
Motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine? Um, this time is right?
Yes.
The short?
Yes.
The Primo?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carried.
Okay, very good. Okay, so the next application is fifty four Brookline for the small extension, uh, Judy.
Mm-hmm, I move that we approve application nine A oh four twenty two. Based on the following findings of fact. One, the requested variance of one point five feet into the thirty five foot rear setback. In lieu of the forty feet request required by code is miniscule. Two, the variance is necessitated because the rear setback is not straight across the property line. Three, also, this variance will allow the addition of the three season room. To line up with the existing house to create a unified look. Four, there is no other alternative to allow the applicant to achieve the desired result. Five, the neighboring house closest to this proposed variance also has the addition of a three season room. Six, the footprint of the house will not increase as a result of this be- variance because it will be built. In place of the existing patio. Seven, there will be no change in the character of the neighborhood. Condition, this variance only applies to the addition of a three season room. In the area of the existing patio as presented in testimony and written application. Two, all building and planning board approvals must be obtained.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, do you have a second and I'll make the?
Yes, yes.
Second.
Thank you, Matt, okay, go ahead.
You said planning board in there?
Yes, I did.
Take planning board out, there's no planning.
They don't need it, right?
So please take planning board out of that and just, um.
Building.
Building, building permit.
Building permits, okay. All building permits must be obtained.
Okay.
Thanks, Rick.
Are you okay, Judy and Matt, with that change?
Sure, sure.
Okay, good. Okay, uh, is there any discussion on this? Does anyone have any concerns about it? Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I missed a second on that.
Uh, Matt?
Matt had a second, okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, the motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine?
Yeah.
And the short?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carried.
Okay, the next application is one thirty three Summit, this is where we're extending the existing no changes. Variances that were previously approved due to the construction issue, so Andrea?
I had one question, which is that our extensions in the past have been for twelve months. That's what our original variance is, they indicated, African indicated, it might be into October. So can we do a thirteen and a half month extension or?
Oh, it's basically that twelve months runs on them pulling a permit and starting.
That's right, okay, got it, okay.
Should be tight enough. Okay.
Okay, so I move to approve application nine A dash oh five dash twenty two. Et cetera, based on the following findings of fact. Number one, there are no changes from the original application nine A dash eleven dash twenty. And all findings of fact remain. Number two, the extension request is the result of, uh. An, an inability of the original contractor to pu- to perform as originally intended. Number three, the extension is granted for twelve months from today. Conditions, all previous conditions shall remain.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion on this, any issues related to this? Wonderful, Rick?
The motion is to approve with conditions for short.
No, because I voted no the last time.
Okay.
Mr. Di Augustine? Mr. Di Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
And Ms. Tompkins right?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Okay, and our next area is twenty-five hundred Elmwood. This is the rebuilding or replacing rebuilding the garage. Uh, you have that, Matt?
Yes, I do. All right, uh, so I move to approve application nine A dash zero six. Dash two two, based on the following findings of fact. One, the garage is currently structurally unsound and is also not wide or long enough to accommodate many current vehicles. Two, the garage would be in keeping with other garages in the area and thus would not alter the character of the neighborhood. Three, the variance is not substantial due to the fact that the garage was originally constructed. Was already closer than the allowable ten point eight foot side setback. The following conditions will apply. One, the applicant will install landscaping along the side of the garage in order to improve the aesthetics. Two, the variance only applies to the garage and the style, materials and dimensions as per plans submitted and testimony given. Three, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits.
Second.
Back in Judy?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I, can I add Matt to your condition for three that unnecessary building permits and architectural review board approval shall be obtained?
Oh, and architectural review board, okay.
Pretty good. Judy, you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, good. Okay, discussion. Any issues here? Okay, Rick?
Motion to approve, Mr. Primo?
Yes.
I'm sorry, was it me or?
I, if it's me, I can't hear you, Rick.
Yes, Schmidt.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins right?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions Gary.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna slide over in the same order and go over to thirty-one oh eight East Avenue. Now, I, Mr. Primo, you.
Before we do that, can we just have a continued tableing motion for five A oh one and five A oh two?
Okay, I was just trying to stay in the same order, but that's fine.
I think we might go into a little more discussion with the next one, so.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, all right, so I have the first one there and I think.
I think you can do both.
Yeah, okay. You're okay with that, Ed, if I just take care of both of them, okay?
Just make a motion that you please.
Yeah, I know. I got it. I got it. Okay, I move that we table applications five eight oh one and five eight oh two. For additional information being offered by the applicant at the October meeting.
Second.
Whichever one of you.
And motion by Dennis Mike. So the motion is to table applications five A oh one twenty-two and five A oh two twenty-two. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Um, Di Augustine?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins right?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Motion to continue table on it Gary.
Okay. All right, so let's go now to thirty-one oh eight. Um, just, you know, again, we. The public hearing is open at this point. And we certainly heard from the applicant that they have additional information, maybe some modifications, whatnot. Obviously, the neighbors were certainly interested in hearing more about that, so. I would just say Heather, what do you think you would like to do?
Um, I suppose my initial inclination is that we should wait to discuss it until we have the materials. It sounds like we don't really know exactly what the height is of the canopy, so. That that's kind of how I'm inclined to look at it is that I just wanna get all of the information.
So you're, you would table, you would table for additional information?
Correct.
And keep the public hearing open?
Right.
Okay, well, please do so.
Um, before we do that.
Yes, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, um, because a motion to table is not debatable before anyone makes that motion to table. If you as chair want to have a discussion because you're not taking action tonight, it would be appropriate to do so.
Oh, goodie. So we can go back to the old way, hey?
Well, sort of, but you're not taking.
I know, I'm just busting.
Open, so, um, but if you, it's just once that motion to table is made and seconded.
Yes, I understand.
For discussion. I don't know, as as Heather just said. I don't know that the board is ready to discuss this because clearly the applicant is going to be submitting. Um, a number of pieces of additional information, uh, lighting, on lighting. Um, on the canopy, on cut sheets, et cetera. Um, so, um, I leave it to the discretion of the chair as to whether he wishes to have a discussion to get a sense of the board. I will tell you from a staff perspective. Um, this is a significant project that we're gonna want some time. To work on findings for whoever is going to make that motion and. Have proposed findings, um, and it would be helpful to staff. To know the board's inclinations before we're tasked with drafting those proposed findings.
Yeah, I I think, you know, given the gravity that it's reasonable to have some general comments, and if that's the the core, I'm here to. Talk to the those comments before we would make action on each of these three tonight, then that's fine. I I think, you know, it's a little remiss, given just not only what Heather said and when she was asking her questions that. It's quite obvious that there are changes that are in being inclined to be made here. So it would be kind of pointless to then debate over some of the specifics that could change. But I think getting a general overview, you know, from the, from the board would be good, so. Uh, why don't we just go around quickly and do that, if you don't, yes?
Just before we do that, I'd rather have Ken. And usually with tabling and and keeping public hearings open, we're tabling it because we're requesting something. I I know we don't have to with the tabling, um, I'm just wanna make sure that we can just. The board can just basically table this, leave the public hearing open, period, correct? We don't have to give.
That's absolutely correct, Rick.
Okay, okay.
And can I, I I will just throw out that I don't, this is membersment, I don't have enough information to make a decision.
Right.
With regard to the bigger questions that need to be answered. Because I really want to find out what happens with the information provided to the. To the neighborhood people. I want to find out more information about the canopy. I want, I need to find out what limits. If it was approved, we can place on it. Um, I just don't have that information.
Right, right. Let me just circle back then so we can get on with this, because it is pretty late here. Um, is that, why don't we, if there's anyone who has anything who they think they need more information. So the applicants can understand some of the things that we may be concerned about. Why don't we offer for that? And then we'll hold the general discussion, you know, once we get the additional information, if that's reasonable. So does anyone have anything other than what was mentioned in either by Betsy in her presentation? Or by questions of the board members already that they have, you know, again, our. Our wisdom, I guess, of what concerns the board members would have. Is there anyone on the board that would like to offer anything else?
Yeah, Judy, we have no guarantees whatsoever of the operation of this place. There's no guarantee about when the the trucks are going to come and bring more gas. It could be three o'clock in the morning to be ready for five o'clock. We have no idea. And we have no idea really of the operation of what I don't think is appropriate, but of of a convenience store. We really don't. It's it's all very vague. It's very vague.
Okay, well, I think, you know, obviously the applicants are understanding that these are concerns, so that's more than reasonable. Okay, does anyone have anything else?
I have, um. I think there's a lot of discussion and speculation about increased traffic. And so to the extent that there could be information presented with respect to increased traffic. As a, as an impact on this neighborhood, I think that that would be helpful one way or the other. You know, suggesting that it would truly increase, because obviously the applicant is indicating that. Um, with so many other options, um, in other areas, you're not gonna get a lot of other residents coming from. Um, different places than than the traffic that's already there. Um, versus obviously, the residents certainly believe that it will increase traffic, so some kind of. Um, info.
Traffic study, yeah, sure.
Right, would be helpful.
Great, okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to dovetail. The business itself is going to create. Much more traffic, because you're gonna have deliveries if the convenience store should should go through.
Okay, but Judy, that's the, that would be the point of the traffic study to look at.
Well.
Opposed views, okay, and then that's what the traffic study would be.
Right, and will it go all the way down to the new housing down, um, East Avenue?
That property is obviously not in the town of Brighton, so I'm not sure how far I'm not a traffic engineer, but. You know, uh, everyone again is hearing the concerns here, Judy, okay?
They do go beyond sometimes.
Yeah, just, just to, just to address Judy's concern, I do think it would be helpful. Um, and I I imagine that the developer is still listening to the comments. I do think it would be helpful. As both Judy and Heather have articulated, to have some better traffic information. Um, not just on the vehicular traffic visiting the site. But, um, also what delivery schedule there would be for the convenience store. What delivery schedule there would be for gasoline. We heard a little bit about that. Whether the, um. Uh, applicant is willing or able to accept a condition. To limit the hours of those deliveries either for the convenience store or for the gasoline. Um, because it certainly is within the board's power to specify those limits as conditions. Um, I think those things would be very helpful, uh, for the developer to address. To give some better understanding to the board of what those traffic impacts are going to be.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay.
Uh, Dennis, before we, before we go, what I would really love at the next hearing is for. The applicant to as dressed, address as best they can. The numerous concerns that were raised tonight by people in the neighborhood. If they can answer what they would do about to help mitigate headlight. Um, noise. Um. Uh, you know, um, whether they would consider not selling certain products at the store. Any, anything that they could do to specifically address those concerns would be very helpful to me.
Okay, that sounds good, because generally, you know, it's the, when the public, as you know, that's why we don't have interrogatories that. You know, the issues get out there and then if they can be addressed by the applicant or to do that, not so much to refute them. But just to address them in some fashion, that's more than reasonable, and I think the applicant is able to respond that way. Okay, is there anyone else then? And otherwise, we can go back to eighty oh four and Heather could give us a question.
Quick, quick comment?
Hey, Rick?
All right, go ahead, Rick, please.
Real quick, I just, I just kinda get kinda going on, uh, what Ken had said and Judy's concern. I really think that the deliveries are really important, because. I don't know if you've ever been at a gas station when one of those trucks pulls in, but them pulling off the cap. Those, them dropping those hoses, it makes all kinds of noise. And if they're doing that at three in the morning, I don't think there's any way is that something that.
All right.
We, we should allow.
Yeah, so I I think they, the applicant understands that there's concerns about what kind of a schedule is really there. Because again, it, it was rather nebulous the way it was discussed, so I don't think any of us could glean out of it what their proposed schedule would be. And they, I'm sure they understand.
Who over the schedule, so.
Excuse me?
Well, Rick, it sounded to me like they had no control over the delivery.
That's right, they have no control.
Right, okay, let's not start debating it though, okay, but it the bottom line is if they don't offer us something, then we don't have something to work with, correct? So I think they they've been asked to offer something, so let's see what they would offer.
Right, and if there's a condition imposed that they violate, it's gonna be a code violation.
Correct.
We'll be cited for it. Um, and and just, just to maybe try to wrap up. Um, in this generic way, there were several representations made by the developer verbally. That I would like to see committed to writing. For example, Rick raised the issue of selling vaping products. I'd like to see a commitment in writing from the applicant that they will not be selling vaping products. Uh, there was a discussion about potentially getting those lights off earlier than midnight. I'd like to see the developer address that in writing, so that we're not just, you know, not having to go back and hunt through a.
Yes.
Transcript to try to find answers, so that when we go do our resolution, whether it's for approval or disapproval. We have all the facts clearly laid out, um, and we know what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I think on the subject of that, um, in particular, with respect to the time that lights would need to be shut off. If, if this was something that we were to consider. Um, you know, could, could they be shut off in a half hour after they close? Could they be shut off in an hour? Like, why, why couldn't they be shut off within the half hour?
Right.
But that specificity would help.
Yes, and again, you know, as pointed out by the Rick or Ken, you know, the conditions that if we were to move on this in some fashion. We would be stating those conditions and then the applicant would have to, you know, this is a common thing with all kinds of retail locations. Banks, all kinds of places of how late the lights can be on, and it's an issue that, you know, we have to circle around. But they could certainly offer their best case as to why, and I think that was a direct question about the two hours. So I think they understand that. I would hope they would.
Well, if, if I may, just to go to the other end, if they, when they go on at five o'clock, when the place opens on a weekend, that's gonna affect neighbors as well. So, I threw that out.
Part of the analysis, Judy, then, right? Okay, so Heather, how about it?
Okay, so, um, I move to table. Should I just do oh four, oh five and oh six together?
Is that okay with Kathy and Judy?
Yeah.
Okay, great, go right for it.
Okay, so I move to table, uh, applications eight A oh four dash twenty-two. Eight A oh five dash twenty-two and eight A oh six dash twenty-two. For the October meeting and to hold open the public hearing.
Second.
Sorry, go ahead, someone answer?
Yeah, remember right.
Okay, remember right, okay, good.
I mean.
Uh, we can't really, we agreed that we wouldn't discuss it, so let's move on.
The motion to table and leave the public hearing open for our application to eighty oh four, eighty oh five and eighty oh six. Um, Primo can't vote for short?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Di Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Tompkins right?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Motion to table, keep the public hearings open. Passes.
All right, Rick has an editorial thing about this October meeting date, right? Did you want to reiterate that, Rick?
Reiterate, guys, um, again, uh, Thursday, October sixth. And most likely, um, here at Town Hall.
All right, very good.
I'll, I'll just say it a little stronger than Rick. In person at Town Hall.
Yes. Good.
I've, I've had the direction.
Okay, uh, and then, you know, obviously, as soon as Rick gets these materials. You know, related to these three cases, he will send them out, so.
Yeah.
Uh, you're reading and writing and arithmetic.
Yes, I just wanna say that, uh, we require this material to be into us two weeks prior to the meeting date. So that we can distribute them and get guys and get them and look at them. I have a feeling that they're not going to be getting that stuff into us within the next two weeks. Um, prior to the next meeting, so you could be seeing a request to continue table.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let's, 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 the applicant, uh, you know, who's had, you know, time from the last meeting to this meeting to. And had all the benefit of the public hearing.
Or they still want to have another public meeting, so I I'm I'm gonna guess that we, good chance we might not be seeing this next month.
That's fine, that's fine.
Also, um, in the past, we have started our meetings at seven fifteen when we're in person. I think. Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, we wanna make that at seven o'clock start time. I think, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, we wanna make that at seven o'clock start time.
Yes, meeting will start at seven. Um, and let me just make this one additional comment, particularly for the public and the applicants who are still listening in. Um, we are also working on a virtual component to our in-person meetings so that they could be um, participated in by either a virtual platform like Zoom or in person, so that they would be hybrid meetings. We don't have that in place yet. We're hoping to get that in place as early as next week. So, um, I'm expecting that by October sixth, we will have that hybrid meeting format. But board members, you are all required to be at Town Hall in person.
Wonderful. Okay. Somebody bring the cookies then. Okay, how about, uh, uh, I think we're set then. And again, you know, I appreciate everybody's patience and also Ken, your guidance as it relates to some of this protocol. Um, you know, this is a difficult, uh, you know, issue. There's a lot of factors. There's a lot of opinions, so I think we have heard people kept the public hearings open, so let's just move it forward. Thank you very much. Have a good evening and we'll see you on October sixth.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.